We will recognize those who have filled out a card to speak. And we will not answer any questions during that time. Please be courteous and we will hear your concerns. And the first speaker will be Karen DeLisle.
It's Karen DeLisle. That's my telemarketer screen, if they know how to pronounce my name.
DeLisle, okay.
DeLisle, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Karen DeLisle and I live at 3225 Leinster Circle in Ormond Beach, Florida. I am here representing the Faith Organization. Faith stands for Fighting Against Injustice Toward Harmony, a 501(c)(3) composed of thirty diverse congregations across Volusia County, representing thirty thousand Volusia County residents. In the last year, Faith has heard many heartbreaking stories from members about the -- from our congregations who are struggling to afford the rising cost of rent. For instance, one of our members is a student at Stetson University who lives in a modest apartment with her mother. The student, aside from going to school full-time, has a part-time job and her mother works more than forty hours a week, making thirteen dollars an hour, which is the mean average income of our renters in the county. And yet, they are struggling to make their rent every month. And they are not alone. Currently, over thirty-four thousand households in Volusia County are paying more than half their income on housing. That's because someone working full-time has to be making sixteen dollars an hour just to afford the average one-bedroom apartment in our county. For the thousands of Volusia County residents making minimum wage that have to work seventy-nine hours a week just to afford the average one-bedroom apartment rent. And we know that is not possible. And what if they have children? Who's caring for them? We know that Volusia County is not alone with this problem, but many local governments are deciding to work together to close the gap by establishing local affordable housing trust funds. In the coming month, our committee will be reaching out to each of you individually to set up a forty-minute meeting to discuss the problem and the research that we have done. Together, we can make progress for all of Volusia County. Let's get to work. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Karen. Michael McBride. And before you start, I know you have on here, you want to speak on the conversion of Ormond Beach's issue of septic to sewer.
That's correct.
And I just wanted to -- some of you must not be getting the -- at the meetings, the county has absolutely zero to do with it.
Good to see you, man.
And Ormond Beach, just let me finish and then I'll give you your time. We have absolutely nothing to do with this. Only and if, when there comes a time that it should become an item that would be placed on your tax roll, would that become available? And Ormond Beach has pulled it and to do testing and so forth. So it -- just go for it, but there's nothing we can do and we're not involved in it.
I'm gonna go for it. And then I'm gonna leave when I conclude my talking points.
State your name and address for the record and we'll start the clock.
Okay. Michael McBride, 58 River Drive, Ormond by the Sea. I'm here representing Roger Nutt, who can't be here today. The decision has apparently been made to defer any further work on this project until a scientific study can be completed to identify the origins and transport mechanism of the nitrogenous pollution found in the Halifax River and Timoca Basin. The petitioners of Ormond by the Sea welcome this very sensible decision. The scientific work necessary to complete this essential task will be neither trivial nor simplistic. It can only be undertaken by an organization with the appropriate staff, knowledge, and experience to fully understand the implications and complexity of the work involved, and preferably with the additional background to offer practical and realistic solutions to per -- excuse me, permanently resolving the pollution problem in the Halifax and Timoca River Basins. The petitioners of Ormond by the Sea are aware of two organizations with operations in this area who are capable of completing both aspects of this complex operation. Their identities and contact information will be provided on written application to the following that I will present to the clerk for the record. Make it for your time.
Thank you. Janet Nutt.
My name is Janet Nutt, 2587 John Anderson Drive, Ormond by the Sea. I had a written thing here, but in light of what you said, I'm probably gonna change part of it. Number one, if you people don't represent Volusia County, why are you here? If you can't do anything until after something has happened, why are you here? You're supposed to be representing us. Heather Post is representing us, but the rest of you may not be in my district, but you do represent Volusia County. And we're not alone in Ormond by the Sea. There's currently four thousand septic systems. That means there's at least eight thousand votes. And we're prepared to do that vote. There's a whole county that is against all this big growth. And we all know that this has not really got anything to do with septics or sewers. This is about big growth. Once you get a septic sewer system into our area, you're gonna wipe it out and start all over. We do not want to be Tampa. We don't want to be Little Miami. We want to be Ormond by the Sea. There's nothing wrong with our septics. We don't pollute and you've yet to prove it. We're asking that you prove it. Mr. McBride has some papers he's going to give to the clerk to pass out to you so you can see what he's already said. And I'm kinda upset right now, after what you said, that you don't have any representation for us, because we vote for you people and we are going to vote. Thank you.
I'm gonna break what I normally would do. I did not say that we have no representation, that we don't represent you. What I said was legally, we cannot do anything about it. And whether you think one person does represent you, they can't do anything about it either. It's the county, the count -- because it's just like we can't do that to any city.
Deltona or anybody else?
Deltona, New Smyrna Beach.
Why you wouldn't do it?
We cannot, just hear me out and I'll just explain. I'm not trying to be the bad guy. I represent you. I've answered probably a hundred emails or a thousand emails from people in Ormond by the Sea on other issues, as we all have. And we respect what you have. And if this was something that we could do anything about, I guarantee you, all of us up here would. But it's, the utility service provider is Ormond Beach. Well, just shake your head all you want. I'm just, facts don't really win, friends. I'm sorry, but this is a fact. Let's just end it. This is a fact. I know it upsets people's opinions, but this is a fact. There's not anything this county, any one of us up here can do about it. So I'm just, sorry, just keep, sorry. You do. I'm sorry. We, we don't, people don't have, we also represent other parts of the county. I'm just explaining, you do have representation, but not when your utility provider is the city of Ormond Beach. We can't tell them what to do. So Jim Cochrane, I didn't want it to get to that, but I'm not the bad guy. I answered an email this morning because a representative would not respond to this individual's email. I answered it. I've had dozens where I've answered emails to people in Ormond by the Sea where they weren't represented. So we all do. And all of us up here represent Ormond by the Sea, all of the county, all five hundred and forty thousand of you. We all represent you. Whether we can do anything about it or not is something separate. And, I mean, our legal, our attorney will tell you what we can and can't do. And we have to operate within the confines of the law. And we have to operate that way. Jim? So if anyone has led you to believe otherwise, they're incorrect. Jim Cochrane. Jim Cameron.
Good morning. I'm Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President, Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber. And I have announcement to make. I mean, I talked to some of y'all yesterday at the elected officials' roundtable, but I just wanted to make it known about our Volusia dates at the Capitol, to make sure everybody knows about those dates up there. It's gonna be January fifteenth and sixteenth in Tallahassee. We start at twelve noon with a kickoff luncheon. We have several speakers that we're gonna have join us. I'm still working on that agenda. And then we have teams that we divide up into, issue teams, so to speak, and go out and meet different legislators, different committees and individuals like that. And so, and some of the issues that are being discussed up there currently, though. Some of the people that we have invited is, like I say, cabinet members in particular. We're expecting Visit Florida President Dana Young, tourism advertising, that is gonna be a major issue up there this session, as well as Enterprise Florida CEO Jamal Sowell. That's being talked about as well. But we have also our own Volusia delegation members that we're gonna be hearing from. And we have got invited other department heads up there, including, like I say, state CFO Jimmy Patronas. We're gonna be talking about insurance. I've invited the Insurance Commissioner David Altmeier. And so to hear a little bit more about that. But one of the ones in particular, and I mentioned this yesterday, that I am trying to get in touch with, I mean, to come talk to us, and that is Jared Moskowitz, who is the Director for Florida Department of Emergency Management. And we wanna get discussion with him about FEMA reimbursements, because I know y'all still have some outstanding dollars as it relates to FEMA and as it relates to the state. And so we're trying to get those dollars back here to Volusia County as quickly as possible, though. So you'll be hearing more about it, but, so if anybody would like to join us, then, like I say, you could register on Chamber's website.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all.
That concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. And we will resume at ten o'clock for the regular scheduled meeting. Good morning. We'll be starting the meeting in about fifteen seconds. We'll be calling the meeting to order in fifteen seconds, or maybe less. In fact, it is less. It is ten o'clock, and welcome to the November nineteenth meeting of the Volusia County Council. There we go. It does work. We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here today. And at this time, we will have the invocation by Dr. Lowry, who is walking this way, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And I'm asked, the council, if you'll join me and stand during the pledge.
Let's pray. Lord, I come to you today just thanking you for a beautiful day, for an opportunity to serve you and to minister to the people in Volusia County. I pray, as says in James one, if anyone lacks wisdom, let them ask of you. And so, we're asking you today to guide our thoughts. And may the decisions we make be pleasing to you, and may everything honor you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." You didn't parade down and get a pen? Okay. May I have the roll call? Marcy?
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson, Dr. Lowry.
Here.
Ms. Post.
Here.
Ms. Wheeler.
Ms. Denny's.
Here.
Ms. Gertman.
Here.
And Mr. Kelly.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. I will move to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to any issue on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I want to pull item Q as a separate item, not just for discussion, but possible action.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes.
Ms. Post.
I just want to, for discussion only, R, Romeo, and also T, Tango, and U uniform.
R, T, and...
U.
R, T, and U for this comment, okay? Also, item G has been moved to item eight under other business, so the, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, absent item G and absent item two.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Post to approve, seconded by Gertman. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion to pass the consent agenda, absent item two and eight, G, sorry, is approved unanimously. And we'll go to item two.
Wait. What about discussion?
Q. Item Q, sorry. I need to maybe redress that, that I'm, it was a hearing issue that I said item two, and I was wondering why it was two. It was item Q instead of item two. Dan, is that sufficient? Thanks.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of council. Joe Pozo, Public Protection. This item is a permit request for the Living Legends on the Beach Parade in Daytona Beach shores.
It sure is. Good morning. So, I pulled this for several reasons. First of all, another race on the beach, this is really good. This is really good. And councils had a very strong discussion on the previous one that was unfortunate. And Councilwoman Wheeler is to be congratulated for serving her constituents and walking through a very difficult process with that. As I read this item and spoke with staff in my one-on-one briefing for today, I looked at it, and I said, "Well, why are we not being consistent in what we're doing on our beach parades?" Because, if I believe right, in this particular event, they have to pay for, for our officers on the beach, right? And they have to pay for tolls, but the other one doesn't. So, so, Mr. Reckton, while Mr. Manager, we discussed this, how do we make this consistent for this event as well as the other one? I mean, how, how, how do we take these, how do we create a level playing field for this parade and support them both without making one more pecuniary action on our part? Mr. Manager, what would you suggest?
Well, I think we, we did, our recommended motion was on to, to waive the tolls in this case, because, you know, it is a parade. They're not going down in parking, so we can understand and support the not having the toll. And there are some fees associated with, when they do the parade, the officers will be escorting them. So, there's the matter of their time, like a special detail-type time. So, there would be a few hours of their time. That is something that we could also choose to waive, which would be consistent with the other parade.
In the, so then, to be consistent, which I think serves all events, well, especially this, this particular venue, and council has set direction previously, I'm going to make the motion that on the Living Legends Auto Racing Beach Parade, Special Event Application twenty dash zero ten, that council waives the beach tolls and the cost for beach patrol. And what other?
License.
And what, what, what else do we need?
Insurance.
No?
I think there's a special event.
Permit fee.
Permit fee.
Yes.
Okay, we waive the permit fee. What else do we need to do to waive to be consistent?
Well, we need to waive the, I'll go ahead and start from the top. Council members and staff, good morning. My name is John West.
Sir, could you speak, yeah, to the microphone, to the microphone, so we can...
My name is John West. I live in, at eight seventeen Little Town Road, Port Orange, Florida. We are a five oh one three C, non-for-profit organization, and we are dedicated to the preservation of racing history. We have a museum that's staffed strictly by volunteers.
We need to get the motion.
So, so, I, I, sir, what, what I need to know is what else needs to be waived?
Just waive the fee, the toll fee.
They're done.
Done?
Okay.
Okay. So, is that, Mr. Manager, Mr. Pozo, and Chief, are we, are we good?
Those three things are what we've identified.
Okay.
Tolls, permit, and just whatever time that they may have an officer on the beach leading the parade.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Motion made by Denny, seconded by Lowry.
Oh.
Further discussion? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I know you were up there. You, okay.
I don't care.
He said, he said, he said he would remove his second. Ms. Wheeler, would you like to second the motion?
I would.
Motion made by Denny, seconded by Wheeler. Thank you. Now, Ms. Wheeler, you have a comment?
No, I was just, thank you, Councilmember Denny's, for bringing that up, because I was also going to do that. But I was going to do it in the way of, of, maybe that was another event that we would sponsor, do a sponsorship for, and cover it that way. So, your way is just fine, but that was going to be my suggestion.
Councilwoman Wheeler, if it's okay with you, I will amend my motion to include the Volusia County sponsoring the Living Legends Auto Racing Beach Parade Event Application twenty dash zero ten with the...
Okay, here we go again.
With the as-stated, with the as-stated fee waivers.
Okay, here we go again. And we're going to be criticized for following Robert's Rules of Orders, which we cannot make an amendment unless you want to just amend it. You just made a, made a motion to amend.
Yeah.
Okay, motion made to amend to include the wording sponsorship.
Right, and I seconded that amendment.
And seconded by Wheeler. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to the amendment? Hearing no opposition, the amendment passes. Now, the underlying motion is amended. Any objection to the motion as amended? Hearing no objection to the motion as amended, the motion passes unanimous. And we have followed the correct procedure for those of you listening. Thank you. Ms. Post, you had to comment on item R?
Yes, so, R is the appropriation of the EMS, the Emergency Medical Services Trust Fund monies. And I just wanted to point this out. Don't, don't worry, no questions. Just, just wanted to point out to the public, the public is always commenting on traffic fines and the amount that they have to pay when you're pulled over and you get a traffic ticket. So, I wanted to point this out, that this is, what's the amount? The revenue is seven hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars that will be used for our EMS. But this state apportions fines from certain motor vehicle violations to the EMS trust fund. Upon application by the county, those funds are distributed annually for the expansion or improvement of the local pre-hospital emergency care system. So, just wanted to point out that when you pay your traffic fines, this is the kind of stuff that it goes for. So, thank you.
Any other comment? Item T. I think you had that too, Ms. Post.
So, T and U are combined, and just wanted to have Tad address that very quickly. This is the area of roadway, the widening project on LPGA Boulevard to Strickland Range Road. And I know we've had a lot of people from the public asking about that, and we have a lot of infrastructure questions and needs in that area. So, just wanted it brought to the forefront, that we are doing the mitigation agreement in those areas, and that that project is moving forward. I don't know if you can just give a quick update?
Yes, ma'am. We, we'll actually cover this a little bit later on under the capital project schedule. But this section of Williamson is a widening project. Will go from two to four lanes from LPGA Boulevard up to Strickland. As a part of that, project was originally designed in 2011, and the two pond sites that were located on that project, we are relocating in conjunction with formerly known as CTLC, but CRISP, as it's identified in the next agenda item. We're working with them to relocate the ponds. And as a part of that, there are some wetland impacts that are associated with those pond relocations. In conjunction with the agreement on item U that follows this, we are paying the mitigation bank, which is item T, and then, under item U, they'll be paying us back. So, that's a part of that project. I'll get into it a little bit more with capital project schedule, not to, I don't want to blow the surprise.
Thank you very much. And the, the infrastructure projects, the process takes a very long time, and as, as you've explained many times to me as well in our discussions. But just wanted to point out that that, that project is moving forward, and so that there are really good things happening. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on those two items? Hearing none. We'll move on to item two. And this is a public hearing, the, open the public hearing portion. And Tad, you don't get to sit down yet.
Good morning. Tad Kaysbeer, county engineer. This item is a vacation for the Deland Manor subdivision plat. All right, thank you. The Deland Manor subdivision is located in the southeast quadrant of Deland, in the southeast intersection at Beersford and Hill Avenue. Originally platted in 1925, it encompasses approximately nineteen acres, of which two acres are set aside for roadway. When it was platted, almost none of the parcels described after the sale were based on the actual lots, blocks, and roads rights of way in the plat. They were defined by meets and bounds, and they have continued to be defined that way. And what that has done is created a problem for any of the property owners that own property within that plat. Anytime they sell it, it causes them title issues. So, we are administratively asking for this plat to be vacated on behalf of the property owners in that area, with the exception of Hill Avenue, which has been constructed and is in use by the county. So, there are no objections from the public, and the utility companies had no...
I have no one from the public wishing to speak, so we'll close the public. Public, we have no one?
I'm a resident.
I don't have a card.
I filled it out. I just told it out in case.
Okay, if you have a card filled out. I don't know where it went, Marcy.
She's got it in her hand.
Okay. You can speak. I just didn't have your card. So, if you want to, since I get that, if you want to come forward?
I'm Reba McLaggen, and I live at eleven twelve East Beersford. And I did receive a letter in the mail, as well as many of the other property owners. And I just had a question. I just heard that the property along Hill is not affected. But I was told by Keith Kescholl, your right-of-way specialist, on October twenty-second, that Beersford also would not be affected. And I wanted to make sure that that's the case. And I also have a question. I, from what I understand, there were, back in, when this was first started, what was it? The date, I don't remember. Nineteen twenty-five. When that subdivision was developed, there was a right-of-way for a road along the east side of my property, which is eleven twelve. And that road then had another road behind our property that affects everyone that lives on Beersford Avenue. That road behind us, there was, it was called a paper road, according to your specialist, and that those road, that road behind us would no longer be applicable, or the road on the east side of eleven twelve, which is where I'm at.
Okay.
And I would like to know how that is all affected.
Tad, you have the answer to those? I'm sure you do. I can answer the paper road, but I won't.
Which property is yours? Just sorry.
I am this one.
Okay, all right. Could you go back? Two slides? All right, so, that is, all right. She's the very northeast quadrant of the plat. The Beersford Road is also not affected by it, by this vacation. It's only the sections on the, go to the very last one on the plat. It's only the sections in orange, so it excludes also Beersford Avenue and Hill Avenue. The paper right-of-ways that she's referring to, Miami Avenue on the south side, and then Francis Avenue, as it's identified in the plat, those will go away. What, what it does is it basically returns those roads back to the property owner. So, in your case, and I don't know exactly where your property line is in relation to Miami, whether or not it's in the middle of Miami Avenue or not, or whether or not it even actually touches. But whoever owns the adjacent pieces of Miami Avenue will get that property.
Okay, so, it is divided wherever that road is at.
Correct, evenly. So, these are forty-foot right-of-ways, Miami Avenue, Seminole, and Halifax are forty-foot right-of-ways. So, the northern twenty feet would go to the lots on the north side, and the southern twenty feet would go to the lots on the south side.
Okay, because I was told that, in essence, there would be some property gained by taking that road away.
Correct. So, for example, if your property does line up with Miami Avenue, and say it goes to the center line, you'd gain that twenty feet. On Francis Avenue, on the east side, you would gain all of that right-of-way, because it was, it's part of this plat. So, you'll be getting the, is that thirty feet, Keith?
Yeah, thirty-one feet.
Thirty, thirty-one feet.
So, in essence, this whole process, I'm not sure why it all of a sudden came up, but in essence, it then clears.
Okay, we, you're given, I mean, it's unfortunate that you didn't contact staff in advance. I think the questions have been answered. No? Yes? Because this is not a question-answer period officially, but we want you to get answers to your questions.
Okay, so, in essence, it clears up our deeds.
Right.
So, when you sell your property, the title company won't come back and say, "Well, you've got a road right-of-way in the back portion of your property on the eastern portion of property."
And I think that's a good thing.
Sell your property.
That's fine. That answers my question.
Okay, good. Okay. Ms. Gertman?
So, I want to move the resolution for vacation of the portion of the plat of Deland Manor subdivision. subdivision, map book nine, page 52, in the Deland area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Gertman, second by Denny's. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion is approved unanimously. And the public hearing portion was closed. We'll move now to item three. George?
Yes.
Clay?
I'll have Clay open up, but just to say, the next two items are part of our continuing evolution here, and very happy to have two confirmations coming before you. I'll let Clay open up here, because in this case, Mr. Luzinger is one of our employees that is being promoted and has worked for Clay. So Clay, go ahead.
Good morning. Claire, Director of Growth and Resource Management. We're here today to confirm Kerry Luzinger as our new director of the Building and Code Administration Division. He'll be taking the position that Mike Nelson is vacating. Mike is leaving us after a short term of 30-plus years. We figure he's allowed to have a little bit of breathing room. And so Kerry is coming to us with a vast amount of experience, and Mr. Reckonwald will kind of give you the background that he has about Mr. Reckon, or Mr. Luzinger.
Yeah, we're very fortunate. Mr. Luzinger has been with us since October 2016. He has been our county chief building official since that time. He has over 40 years of construction industry experience. He served as the chief building official for the city of Port Orange. Has also previously served as an electrical inspector and electrical plans examiner for the city of Ormond Beach. He's a master electrician, former electrical contractor, and he serves on the state code of, Building Code Administrators and Inspection Board, having been appointed there by former Governor Rick Scott in 2017. He has the following credentials: He is a state-registered electrical contractor, master electrician. He's a Volusia County Building Code Inspector, and Certified Plans Examiner. He's done a great job as our chief building official, and I am happy to bring him here to recommend for your confirmation.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll make the motion to confirm Mr. Kerry Luzinger for the position.
Second.
Position of Building and Code Administration Director.
Motion made by Johnson, second by Gertman. Any discussion? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to continue serving the folks of Volusia County in my new position. We've got a great group of people over there, and we're just ready to get back to work.
Thanks. Okay. We'll move. Item four. George?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Honorable members of the council, Kevin Captain, interim community information director. Item four is the confirmation of appointment of Jonathan Edwards as internal auditor. County manager George Reckonwald will provide you with Mr. Edwards' background.
Yes. As you know, we've reactivated this position, and we're, I'm very excited to have before you today Jonathan Edwards. Jonathan was, came to us through an exhaustive, really nationwide, search. I learned a lot more about internal auditing than I ever thought I would know, and, but we, it was a great search, and because of that, we've really got a great candidate here today. Mr. Edwards brings extensive experience in all facets of public finance and auditing. He most recently served as the deputy chief financial officer for the town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. That's just right outside Charleston. He was an audit manager for the Cross County Wisconsin, and an assistant finance director for the city of Charleston, South Carolina. In all those positions, Mr. Edwards has worked closely with staff and the councils where he's worked to implement the financial and operational improvements he recommends in his audits. So it's not only just auditing, he also helps make sure that those recommendations are put into place. Jonathan is a certified internal auditor and a certified public finance officer. He has a bachelor's degree in accounting and a master's degree in accountancy from both Missouri State University. So I'm very happy to bring him here before you for confirmation today.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, I would like to make the motion, but first of all, this is wonderful. This was something that I had asked a year ago, and I believe council member Denny's. So we are so glad to have you, but we're going to confirm it first. I'm going to make the motion to approve the confirmation of appointment of Jonathan Edwards as internal auditor.
Second.
Ms. Denny's? Motion made by Wheeler, second by Denny's, to confirm any discussion. Ms. Post.
Hi, good morning. It's nice to see you again. It was wonderful to meet you last, was it last month already? But I wanted to point out, because there has been some discussion in public about this being an instantaneous kind of thing this week, that you are now coming in, but certainly we had asked for this, this position quite a while ago, and this has been an ongoing process. And council was fortunate enough to meet with you individually, to get to know you a little bit before today, and that was good. And so I want to press upon the public that that, that this has been an ongoing process, and we're just now finally making it official, so, but I want to welcome you to the area, and I'm sure you're enjoying this weather. And we're very happy to have you, and I absolutely look forward to working with you and having you onboard. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Denny's?
Thank you. Oh, happy day. Mr. Reckonwald, this has been, definitely was not instantaneous, and I don't know who would think that, because that's been anything but instantaneous, as good government does, unfortunately, sometimes. But Mr. Reckonwald used the word "activate." There's no truer word been said about an appointment, Mr. Reckonwald, than activate. We, this has been a void in Volusia County's internal systems, and this will lay, this will add the needed layer of transparency that we have talked about. It's the reason that you're here. There has been uncomfortable conversations prior to, had nothing to do with you, but you're here because of uncomfortable conversations and issues in the past. And in, in a good faith, work from this council and management to work on that and add another layer of transparency. Council unanimously supported your hire as an internal auditor. So I look forward to working with you, because there's, this is going to be a little bit different, in that you're going to work with council. Mr. Reckonwald, this is, this will be council-directed, not staff-directed, and you're going to be literally between the between. You're going to be between council, and you're going to be between management. And I think you're fully capable of handling that position, because this is going to be all about numbers. There's no adjectives or adverbs in this, and that's my favorite place to be, with the numbers, because that tells the story. And we're going, you're going to help us confirm our story internally for Volusia County, and any weak areas will strengthen, any opportunities we will address. And any, and what I like in my conversation with Mr. Edwards and the manager is that what I believe this is going to lead to is not just, you know, on a calculator and looking at numbers, but how do we strengthen the policies and the internal processes, Mr. Reckonwald, that gets us sometimes to where we're sitting here going, how the heck did we get here, and now we're in damage control? So I'm saying all that because it's the truth. It's our footprint, as is any organization. So it's not, it's not a surprise, but to that end, we're going to address it, and this is, this is a big part of it. And I think Mr. Reckonwald, working with him, that's your encouragement, too, going forward.
It is. Thank you. And the other point I wanted to make, and why the timing of this is very good, besides the great points you made, is we are in transition.
We are.
We are in big transition. It's been very positive, a lot of great retirements are going on and things, and I'm happy for those folks. But at the same time, it's an opportunity for us to look at our processes, make sure that we're not missing something, or we're not losing something in that transition. When you have people who do these jobs for 25, 30, 40 years, it's impossible to get a perfect download of information. Things get missed. Things happen, and with Mr. Edwards' expertise and eyes, it can be one of the tools we use to also make sure that nothing's being missed, and/or we should upgrade this process now, because it's a change anyway in the leadership of that area.
Ms. Gertman?
Thank you. Welcome. I believe it was within my first two meetings that it was one of my concerns as well, and also asked for this role, and I, but I can also understand why it took so long to get here. Again, with some of our transition, staff moving, and ensuring that we get the right person. Because it is about transparency, it is about evaluation without prejudice, based on prior relationships, which you don't have, right? So we're seeking the truth, not to bring any attention to anyone, but to bring attention to our processes and our culture. Because I think what we are going to need going forward is to see the truth. Sometimes it may look a little muddy, right? But we need just the truth to be able to make the right choices and changes, and just be able to move forward in the right way. So I think you are the person for us going forward and moving, moving the operation in the right direction. So thank you for being here.
Any other comments? Just want to say, in a few minutes, in a few seconds, we'll be confirming this, but Mount Pleasant has some very good places to eat. I will direct you to have some, several good barbecue places that I've eaten, and a couple of good places to eat some seafood, right there on the river and down by the dock. So we'll show you those, make sure that you won't get too homesick for some of the food. But hearing no, any objections to the motion, hearing no objection to the motion, we will confirm the appointment of Jonathan Edwards as our internal auditor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Item five. Mr. Moats?
Tom Moats, Human Resources Director. This morning, and before you, is the agreement with Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company to provide a group and dental insurance. I have with me today Mr. John Robinson of Robinson-Bush. He's our consultant on benefits. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Robinson, and he's going to go through the item for us.
We have a presentation that we'll go through, too. Council members, county staff, my name is John Robinson, I'm the president of Robinson-Bush, benefits consultant for Volusia County Government. We had the pleasure of working with the group dental RFP this time. What I'd like to do over the next few minutes is just give you a little background of the process that we went through with this, talk about the analysis that was completed with this, and also talk about the benefits and the financial impact that this will have on, on employees and retirees of Volusia County. We are in the fourth year of a fifth-year contract with that. Next year would have been the fifth year of that particular contract. It was a three-year contract with two renewals. Faced with a 17% increase in the actual premium for this upcoming year, for 2020, the county decided that not to pursue the renewal, but to look to an RFP process to test the market, to see what the market would bear when it, when it came to the health insurance, or the dental insurance premiums for, for retirees and employees. The dental insurance plan that we have is a fully insured plan. It is set premiums that are a part of this particular plan, and we've had that in place for the last four years, as I had said. The RFP process was done through purchasing. It involved the normal comprehensive work that analyzes plans and gives the background information, along with the cost and the, and the experience of the plans that, that were there. Out of this particular RFP, we did an analysis of the different areas and different sections that we looked at in this particular RFP. The administrative services, and we looked at questions on the administrative services. We looked at plan design. We looked at the impact of that plan design. We also looked at the provider network, which is a very important issue, along with financial reporting and capabilities, and then obviously cost is a big part of that as well. In that particular analysis, we wanted to point, first of all, to the actual plan designs. The plan designs we asked for, we asked for matches to what we have now. You know, some of the important issues that we have with this particular plan are the annual maximums. The annual maximums are arranged from $1,750 a person to $2,350. There's a $200 increment a year that could be added if you go for your preventive screenings on an annual basis. That is something that people have progressed over the years with that. There's an annual deductible, the diagnostic and preventive is at 100%. We have minor restorative at 80% in and out of network, and then we have the major at 50%. Those are all matched by the, by Cigna as to what we have now. One of the differences in your plan and others is orthodontics. It covers not only adult orthodontics, but it also covers the, a annual maximum instead of a lifetime maximum of the $1,000. One of the things that we did in this plan years ago was, was because of the, the network issues that we have with dentists, is to put an 80th percentile in for the out-of-network, you know, meaning that dentists that aren't part of the network will still be paid at 80, at the 80th percentile. So 80 out of 100 dentists would be paid at whatever their normal fees would be for that, and the percentages are the same for in and out of network. We did this purposely so that we wouldn't impact those individuals that, that may be going to an out-of-network dentist. And, and as a part of the analysis, we also looked at the network. We looked at the dentists that people were going to, and did a comparison of that, did a side-by-side comparison of the different plans. Currently, Aetna, out of that particular comparison, had 108 dentists in this area that were in the network, and that's compared to 114 that were in the, that are in the Cigna network. You know, so we felt that it was a better arrangement when it came to that. When we looked at the financial aspects of things, we did a, a number of things when we looked at this. The increase that we got through the RFP process was a 9.5% increase. I indicated that the initial renewal was a 17% increase. So that was quite a difference in the, in the plans itself. The actual Cigna plan also will be 0% for 2021, so the rates are guaranteed for two years. After that, the rates are capped. The rates will be capped at no more than a 5% increase, compared to an 8% increase that we had from Aetna. We had others, the other five proposals, but those are the two that we're highlighting at this particular point. You know, so over the five-year period, there will be a savings of about $1.2 million, not only the savings to the county, but to employees and retirees as well. You know, from that initial premium, it's a little over $300,000 in the, in the 2020, the impact it would have there. The county pays 100% of the employee-only coverage, so if an employee only is in the plan and in the medical plan, they get the dental at, at no cost to the employee. That, the impact on the, on the county is significantly greater as well. It was lower, the $150,000 lower than what the, the premiums would have been under the, under the increase. Looking at what that increase was over, over time, it ended up being an $84,000 increase as opposed to the $170,000 increase when we're looking at what the impact would be on, on the, or 150, I'm sorry, on the county. Looking at it from an employee, retirees pay the same rates, and employees that, that aren't covered under the health plan pay the same rates that would, that 100% of those particular rates. The impact on the, on the employees and retirees was $95,000 instead of $170,000. You know, so quite a difference in that as well. And those increases are, this, there will be no increase for 2021, which we found to be pretty, you know, a pretty good arrangement as well. So with that, I will just open it up for any questions that you may have or comments, and be happy to provide any additional information you need.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Johnson, second by Post. Any discussion? Any questions? Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very well explained.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move to item six. Tammy?
Tammy Bong, Budget and Administrative Services Director. Today is your year-end budget resolution, where we're preparing for the financial audit. We have a few areas that we have some additional revenues, and we're appropriating those so it can be distributed. They fulfill -- 74% of this agenda item is directly related to Hurricane Dorian, so their estimated costs associated with that event, and we're appropriating $2 million for that. From there, we're appropriating Resort and Commission Development Tax. And the two areas that will be receiving those additional funding would be southeast and also West Volusia. And then we have a $20,000 local match for Section 8. And I'd be happy to answer any detailed questions, but that is a highlight of this item.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment? Motion made by Denny, second by Lowry, to approve the budget resolution for fiscal year 2018-19, the revised budget year-end fund reconciliation. Any questions, discussions? Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimous. Thank you, Tammy. Item seven has been withdrawn. George? And we'll move now to item G.
Yes, G was the one.
Pardon?
Yeah, item.
Item G was on the consent.
Right.
Has been moved to here.
We moved it up here because of the interest that was shown in our briefings, and it is some very good information, good new stuff. We have to put forth that type of presentation to get our grant funding, and so we thought it would be good to go ahead and share it here with a direct item and just to show some of the good things that are going on. Lucinda?
Good morning. Lucinda Coley, Library Services Director. As Mr. Reckonwell mentioned, the long-range plan is required for our state aid grant application, and this is a very broad plan that's in the agenda item. And from that, the library staff will be working on a plan of service, which is more detailed in nature. I'm sorry, I didn't do this. So the process that we used, it's taken us about a year to get to this point. We worked with one of our vendors to put together a survey, and we had a cardholder survey, and so it went out to everyone who had an email address that was an active cardholder. And we had a 71% completion rate on that, and we were then able to break it down by the predominant way that they use the library, in clusters, example, like our page turners, those are people who check out physical items in the library, double features cluster, they check out DVDs, movies, that type of thing. And of course, bedtime stories or checking out children's materials. So we asked them how often they visit a branch, how often do they visit our digital resources, what do they think is the most important role of the library? And for this group, it was access to library materials. We also had a stakeholder survey, and that went to our library advisory board members, our Friends of the Library Board members, volunteers, and then branch-selected community members. We asked each of our branch managers to select members in their community that they thought the survey should go to. So we sent out the survey, and we asked them more questions about what role was most important for the library to fill in their community. 40% said to promote learning and literacy, and 21% to serve as a community center, providing meeting room space and relevant programming. And 17% of that group said access to materials. So we also studied our use patterns and, you know, do users visit more than one branch? Do they only check out physical items? Do they also check out electronic resources, just electronic resources? You know, we know that in some of our communities, there aren't as many children, so we looked at what resources they were checking out there. And then we also just observed in the branches how people were using the resources. Were they attending a class? Were they sitting there reading newspapers? Were they picking up reservations, browsing the collection? And we do know that since we instituted self-service checkout, 80% across the board use our self-service checkout. Not 80% in every branch, but across the board. So our findings, for the most-used services, still, people are looking for a collection of physical materials that they can check out. That number, that's mainly books and DVDs, but it's sort of decreasing as we see our checkouts of electronic resources increasing. But we still see physical items as our most-used resource. But also, we float our collections in Volusia County. So if you're in a smaller branch, you see a higher turnover of materials. We're pushing and pulling and moving materials around the county to keep our collections fresh, because we know we have a lot of browsers who come in and check out materials off the shelves. The second item, how people use the library, is for skill development, learning. They are using eLab. We have eLabs in a lot of our locations, where you can get one-on-one assistance if you're working on your resume. We still have a lot of folks who don't have email addresses. We're helping them establish an email address. They're using our Lynda.com for a wide array of learning programs. We know that there are folks that are able to get a job or advance in their job because they're learning software programs using Lynda.com. And Tutor.com is also very popular. That's students and families. You know, when you're seven o'clock in the evening and you don't know how to help your child with AP Calculus, which is me, then you can go online, and there's a tutor that will help them through that, answering those questions. We have maker programs, very popular, whether that's crafting, sewing. We keep adding sewing machines and locations. People want to learn how to sew. Someone was telling me that they were in the Deltona Library, someone was hemming a skirt, someone was making a quilt, you know, and someone else was learning how to sew. So there's a lot going on where people want to learn. We also do some robotics programs. We do coding programs. And so learning and skill development is something that we continue to develop in the libraries. And then digital collections, that is our second-largest cluster of users. They're checking out eBooks, they're checking out e-audio, e-magazines, they're streaming music. And many of those users are digital users only. They never step foot in one of our branches, but they step into our online resources. And children's services, folks are attending our early learning literacy programs. We're really directing all of our storytimes to early literacy, early learning, kindergarten readiness, and we're really trying to be more coordinated in our efforts countywide, so that if someone goes into the Port Orange Library, they're going to see the same types of programs that if they went into the Daytona Beach or the Deland Library. And we have a robust number of homeschool groups that come in and use the libraries as well. And they come in groups, and we plan programs for them, or they self-service use the library. And then programs and meeting space, we're trying to do a better job of tracking who is attending our programs, so we can do a better job of either contacting them or knowing where they're coming from. You know, if we have a program in Oak Hill, and they're all coming from Edgewater, maybe we aren't doing a very good job of marketing those programs, and we can reach out to the folks with library cards or others in Oak Hill. Or maybe we're not providing the types of programs that they're looking for in Edgewater. So we're trying to do a better job with that. Community meeting room space, it's really hard. We do lots and lots of library programming, and some libraries have more space than others, but we do offer our rooms for community meetings. And tutors after school, Port Orange, there's not a table available. Tutors are in there tutoring the kids after school. And our folks attend all types of programs, learning, cultural, technology, entertainment. We had over 177,000 people attend a library program in our libraries last year. Lastly, residents still use the library. We're still helping them close that digital divide. They come in with their own devices to connect to the wireless internet. We had over 619,000 wireless internet sessions in our libraries. Last year, we increased our bandwidth, and we can have unlimited users now on our Wi-Fi network. They still use the public access computers. That's gone down a little bit. We had over 289,000 sessions, excuse me. And in the last two years, or year and a half, folks have really started checking out, we have internet hotspots for checkout. And we have 378 hotspots, and we have 297 reservations this morning. So we know that a lot of those folks, they check it out, they have it for two weeks, and then they get their name back on the reservation list, and that's their only internet access at home, is checking out that hotspot. So our plan of service, we're going to set our goals and have an action plan. So what we're looking at always is enhancing the promotion of our current services, our retooling, implementing new services if they make sense, and it's what our community's looking for. And then I think something that we're not very good at is stopping providing some services. I think we have to look at some of our services that are used by a small number of people, and as difficult as it is, maybe that's a service we can't afford to provide anymore because we want to invest that money in one of our other services. And I'm not saying we're going to, but that's something we're definitely going to look at. So we're going to set system-wide goals, and we're going to set some branch-specific goals and have a plan of action, and that's our next step. And how we're going to look at success, of course, use statistics and program attendance. We're constantly, I'm overwhelmed by the numbers, because we just can collect so much data now on how people use the library and what they're using, where they live, you know, if they travel, all of that. Something else that we're, this is new for us, is household market penetration. We're at 28% of our households have active library cards. That means they've used them recently. We want to get that over 30%. That's our goal right now, and just keep building that. And I think a lot of that has to do with how we market library services and figuring out how to market 21st century library services to those households that aren't familiar with what we're offering to them. And new cardholder retention, we can go to every outreach that's available to us, and we do all the time, and we can issue library cards, but how do we retain those users? How do we get them either to come in virtually or come into the library? And so we've been using a four-step approach where we send four different messages timed to new library cardholders, as long as we have their email, to tell them about different services, and we try to touch the major services that are offered over a period of time. And that's, we have about a 48% retention rate, which is higher than most libraries our size and with our budget. So that is working, and we're going to continue that messaging. We have very few people, when they receive a message via email from the library, very few who unsubscribe, and we have a very high open rate. So we know people are reading our messages, and they want to receive them. So the next, this net promoter score, that's something we're just getting ready to start. It's a weekly survey. It's a very short, and it goes to a very small group of people who recently used the library. And once they receive that survey, then they get pulled out, so they're not continuing to receive it until we get through all of our users. So the main question there is, would you recommend the library to other people? But then there's a question about how they use the library. And so we can just keep in touch with how people are using the library and keep looking at our services and tailoring them to meet the needs of our community. Of course, we look at visits. That's how we know people are coming into the library and using the internal resources that maybe don't have a metric attached to them. And then we're looking at the Florida Library Association standards and outcomes to make sure that we're in line with other public libraries throughout the state. So one immediate change that we found through the survey that we are planning to do in January, we have, over the last 10 years, employed a lot of efficiencies throughout the library system. We, you know, we lost 14 positions during the downturn in the economy, but even so, we've outsourced some of our materials processing. We've RFID-tagged our collection for easier check-in and the ability to track items, our self-service checkout, we have self-service reservation pickup. And we've consolidated some of our public service desks in our large libraries, where we had a reference desk and we had a circulation desk. So we've combined the desks so that we're on the floor more. We've employed more roving librarians, so they're out in the stacks, helping people and helping people learn how to use the self-checkout. So we are planning to increase our closing time. On the west side right now, the large libraries, they close at 7:30. They're going to close at 8:00. On the east side, the libraries close at 7:00, and they're going to close at 8:00. We know that with the current closing times, it's very difficult for families to get to the libraries, and with the change in the school schedule, makes it even more difficult. So we think that this slight shift will benefit families, working people. Example would be in Port Orange. We have a lot of millennials in that community who would like to have book clubs, come to library programs. They, we close too early. At 7:00, we're closed. And so we're working to be able to serve better. We've started some Twilight Tales for children and families, and they start really early, but we do get a lot of families, which tells me that that's something we need to be doing in more libraries, which we're in the process of setting up. So once, and then Dickerson and Hope Place, we're going to add Tuesday evening, so they're open Tuesday and Thursday until 7:00, because we know that those are also a lot of folks working in those communities. So then, once we've set this in place, then we're going to start evaluating our smaller libraries, those real tiny libraries that we have, Oak Hill, Pearson, Lake Hill, and Orange City, and see how we can staff them, maybe differently, maybe the same, but how we can look at their hours and make sure that they're open, the hours that folks in those communities and those neighborhoods need us to be open to meet their needs. So I just wanted to highlight that and hopefully answer some of the questions.
Thank you. Ms. Dinnies?
Thank you. And this is why it didn't belong on the consent agenda. I'm just saying, this is an amazing, amazing service for all of Volusia County, Lucinda, and our libraries. The county runs our city libraries. Very few counties do this, it's my understanding. Usually, the individual cities run their libraries, but Volusia County still invests in our citizens countywide with our libraries.
Definitely in Florida, there are a lot of county systems. There are some county systems where in the middle of the county system, there's a municipal library as well. But no, we're very fortunate here in Volusia County.
But going back to your surveys, you had over 8,000 responses to your surveys. That's a really, really big response rate, which tells us that not only are we engaging, that they are taking the time to give their input, which is really a sign of success, that they want to speak to us, they want to share their thoughts with you. And out of those surveys, almost 41% felt that the library promotes learning and literacy in a 100% pie chart, and then the second one serves as a community center, providing meeting space and relevant programming. That is critical. And this is just from the 8,000 responses, not from the other information you gave. But this is how the community that engages, sees our libraries, and I just want to say you're doing a really great job in your comment about the projects like Edgewater and Oak Hill. That's a good thing. That's not a negative thing. They were at peak at Edgewater, so they shifted them to Oak Hill, and the problem then is Oak Hill's citizens, by the time it gets down there, they can't sign up because Edgewater filled them up.
Exactly.
So, and I know you're addressing that, but that's the really good news. but that's the really good news of how effective what we're doing on a day-to-day basis and all of our libraries are. So, you're to be congratulated for, for, for these great programs. And looking at expansion, we've talked about Oak Hill and some of our other libraries that need to be expanded, especially when we have a school such as Burnside Tech down in Oak Hill that is growing. And here's an interesting thing that I didn't know, especially down in that particular area, your wire, our wireless. If you drive by the Oak Hill Library in the evening or in the weekends, there's people sitting in their cars outside that have no wireless. They use our libraries, the outside wireless, to conduct the business that they need to do. So, we have a community service that we're providing, even when the doors are closed, for the citizens that need it the most.
Let, let me just say about that, though, that our wireless turns off about thirty minutes after we close the last library. And as for safety reasons, we've always had that in place.
So, how do they do that?
Well, because Oak Hill closes before the last regional closes at seven-thirty, so it's until eight o'clock. So, they're using it until eight.
Well, that's, that's just another example of, of the greats, and I don't want to get into all of that, the great work that you do. But also, it highlights, it's, it's the, the word that I'm using over and over again, the IOT, the Internet of Things, in that we have digital users, right? We're using RFID for tracking. I mean, our, our wireless, everything is coming down to satellites and, and wireless. We're, we're living in a, we're living in a, forget wireless world, we're living in a satellite world right now. And this is all part of it. But I just want to, Lynda.com. We talk about telling the story. Lynda.com, if you've never gone there, that is one of the great assets that Volusia County has for our citizens. And Mr. Reckon, well, maybe we could focus on that, either through, I don't know, through our social media, through schools, through PSAs, through everything that we have. Because if our citizens knew that they could get, you can learn Excel, there's so many things that you can do on Lynda.com and be certificate-worthy and be prepared to take a test for a certificate.
Yeah, we, we have classroom teachers who make sure every kid in their class has their library card up to date, so they can use the Lynda.com resources as an individual through the library, but for their classwork.
And we'll continue to highlight, we, libraries are a good group. When we're out putting together our activity lists and our good things, they could fill it up. So, we will continue, obviously, to highlight that and, and make more of it. I also want to say it highlights, I think, the power of a consolidated library system countywide, that we can put these things together, and then, you know, these cities can benefit across the way. It's, I think it's a very good example of, of the power of having a big consolidated system in a county the size of Rhode Island, that we're able to be consistent. And they can come and get, work in Oak Hill, or they can come on over here to Deland and have the same abilities.
So, do you need a motion, we need a motion?
I was waiting, I thought there might be one in there somewhere.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve the library division's long-range plan from 2020 to 2023.
Motion made by Denny, second by Wheeler. Ms. Gertman.
I just want to say thank you for all your services and how impressed I've been being newer in the system and seeing so many of the programs and, and opportunities you've put together, and the diversity of ages, of, of various people that come and can take advantage of the system. What I keep hearing is what a partner you'll be in our census process, right? I, I, from what I'm hearing, seeing, you touch many of the communities that we had the, the hardest challenges. And I saw programs where you had zero to five. You had, you know, programs with the children, with young families, out in Pearson, out in different areas with the, with the immigrant and the migrant areas. So, is there an assigned staff person to work with us for sans, for census? Have we even had that discussion? Are they part of our committee? Have we had that discussion with how we're going to utilize our county, county libraries to help?
Internally, we have. We have not with, but Lucinda is a big part of it. And of course, she has the responsibility of running the entire system, so she, I'm sure will have one of her right-hand people. But we'll make sure everybody has who the contacts are and, and work with Brian and the team. Because you're right on, it's, the library is a, you know, a very important point in that census system.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Post.
I wanted to say, you brought up the sewing. I thought that that was fascinating. And it actually brought back some, some wonderful memories. I used to actually check out sewing patterns in, in the late eighties. But, but that was a, a thing that I don't think a lot of people understood that you could actually do. And sewing patterns, even back then, were very expensive, so.
Right. Well, we don't, I don't think we have any patterns, but.
Not anymore.
Anymore. But we might, I don't know. But our friends at the library.
I don't have time to sew now anyway. It's okay.
Our friends at the library groups have been extremely generous in buying new sewing machines for each of our libraries that's offering that service, so that if they have four machines, they're all the same. We get a lot of folks who want to donate machines, and that's great. But if we have, you know, four that are the same, and then we can teach a class. And we have a library associate at the Delan Library. She has started a series of classes to teach, teach sewing. So, it's very, people like crafting, they like making, they like taking, making and taking, and, and learning, so.
Well, I love that you pointed out that the, one of the things the library does is act as the community center, because to me, that is a tremendous focus on bringing the community together. And the fact that you're actually looking to address the community needs. So, I know, I know that we have talked about Hope Place and that library, and you actually looking into that area and talking about the community garden and, and various things that you can do to, to help coordinate with community needs and services there as well. So, I think that's a wonderful aspect of our libraries, and I would love to see more out-of-the-box thinking and, and to see us really excel in those areas. But what you're doing now is fantastic. So, keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I noticed that you, that you said, stated that the Dickerson and Hope Place would be open Tuesday and Thursday.
Day and Thursday.
It says Tuesday only on the.
Yeah, there are, oh, let's say.
Just, just pointed that out.
We're going to add it, because they're already open Thursday.
All right.
Sorry, yeah, that slides.
And then a couple of things. You mentioned the coding, which is very important today for people looking for jobs. That's one where companies are actually bringing people in to teach them how to do that, giving them a job. Is that done just by certain times or something like, you don't have a regular schedule for each? You just announced that coding's going to be taught, and that's it?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we, we promote it with our programs on our events calendar, which is on our website, and then through, you know.
But, but that is very important for, for those that want to choose a career, or I guess a good starting point. The other thing was, I know that when we discussed the hotspots a year or so ago, and I think we had at that time fifty, and now we have.
Yeah, we keep adding.
And I, I suggested that we add, because the fifty were always checked out. But I thought that was, was very important. Oh, and I have a sewing machine, a Singer pedal from the twenties, that I'll be happy to donate. In case you have a power outage, you could show, this is how they used to do it.
We'll use it as a prop.
It might need a belt to go with it, but.
Does that make you an old sewing saw?
It makes.
No.
I guess it does. Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for everything you do in the program. With that, we'll now move to item eight, and this is Mr. Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see an official, Mr. Coolidge, coming forward as the attorney for the authority, Mr. Arden, and the official party for Embry-Riddle. I'm not sure who's going to speak for, for them, but we're pleased to present to you a, for your, for TEFRA approval, a, the bonds of the Educational Finance Authority for the benefit of Riddle. The year, the, the public hearing has been conducted. Your finding is that there's a public purpose. Embry-Riddle's a 501(c)(3). The, the resolution describes the purpose, the purposes for which this is to be put forth. And I suggested that Riddle might want to brag a little bit about how much money is to be spent here in Volusia County.
Okay.
Well, good morning. Randy Howard, Senior Vice President and CFO at the university. First, I want to say thanks to the county council. We, we believe we have a great partnership with the county. We are very proud to be part of Volusia County. And we firmly believe that everything that either one of the groups does benefits all parties. So, we're all about student success, creating opportunities for students, and creating opportunities for high-paying jobs in, in the county. And we have enjoyed partnering with you on so many things. Today, we, we have seen tremendous growth at our campuses, both here in Volusia County and in Arizona. So, we need to build some more facilities, largely residence halls, parking garages, and associated facilities and structures. And you, you've got the information in front of you. Due in approximately eighty-eight million dollars in par value, a hundred million dollars in proceeds, and about eighty to eighty-five percent of the money will stay in Volusia County for projects on this campus. The remainder benefit our campus in Arizona.
Okay. Ms. Wheeler.
I was just going to make a motion to approve the resolution finding public purpose for and approving issuance of the Volusia County Educational Facilities Authority revenue and refunding bonds on behalf of Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University Incorporated.
Second.
Motion made by Wheeler, second by Post. Any discussion? Ms. Post.
That was actually, I was going to make.
Okay.
Yes.
Any note, any discussion, no discussion? Any objection to the motion? The motion to approve the resolution finding public purpose for and approving issuance of Volusia County Educational Facilities Authority revenue and refunding bonds on behalf of Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item eight A. Dan, I guess this is.
This is a, a similar finding to be made. This, these are the Housing Finance Authority Volusia County bonds. Sarah Metz, its council is moving towards the podium. And also in the audience, I believe, RJ Brock and Mark Gautier, who are here for the Clyde Morris Project. The public hearing has, has been had. We, the bonds are, the resolution is order, is in order for your approval. The finding is that there's a public purpose to be, to serve by the bonds, and our recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Ms. Wheeler.
I would like to move approval of the resolution finding public purpose and approving issuance of the Housing Finance Authority of Volusia County Housing Revenue Bonds.
Second.
Motion made by Wheeler, second by Post. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I might clarify. I think, I, Councilmember Wheeler's jumped ahead of me with good sense to do so, that she's approving, the motion approves all, all, all three resolutions, as I would understand it.
Yes. That's what we have before us. Any objection to those? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item nine, and this is one that, for discussion and direction, I guess, since we only have one meeting in December, and we need to have a workshop, George and I discussed briefly, having the most, the workshop after the organizational meeting in January, which is generally a short meeting, and would like to have it on the agenda for the meeting on the ninth. And I guess we were discussing, the ninth is the Thursday meeting, correct?
It's correct. The, the first meeting of the year must be by charter.
Right.
On that Thursday.
On the Thursday, and that is on the ninth. So, we will have a workshop at that time? Do we want to try to set a time? Do we need to set a, an exact time?
Yeah, we, no, sir, you, you don't, if, if, it would be part of your regular meeting, it wouldn't, doesn't need the additional notice, you would conduct your regular.
What I've discussed with the manager is that if each of us want to, to suggest some topics that you would like to be discussed, that way he can have those as a list to kind of follow. I've got, I know he has several that he would like to have. I think that would give us some direction. It would give us an agenda to have those discussed and, and act upon. So, if that's okay with everyone to have that list, whatever you want, whatever it may be, and.
And, Mr. Chair, and I, I would suggest, being that we're only having the one meeting in, in December, I would suggest that you do the workshop. I would target it either in the afternoon, or we could start it and have lunch while you're there. But you will have more than just organizational items on that January ninth meeting because of the fact that we, you know, will have not had, we've only had the one meeting in December.
What I suggest is we have it after lunch, assuming we've finished.
Yep.
The other meeting.
I think that's wise.
Immediately following.
Yep.
That way, we're not limiting to two hours or something like that.
Exactly. Okay.
Is that okay? All right. So, that's done.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There is one, your deputy clerk has called to my attention. I, I think at one time, it may have been the plan that there'd be a workshop at the second meeting in January, and you were starting, going to start your meeting at nine AM. Given what you've just said, the, I'd ask your, a, a motion, this is a pleasure of the council, a motion to amend the, the starting time, the resolution establishing a regular meeting schedule for the starting time of the January twenty-first, 2020 meeting, to be at ten o'clock with public participation at nine-thirty as nor, as normal. But you previously said it at nine o'clock. I want, I'm changing.
Right. I thought we could do that in the December, but we can go ahead and do that now.
I, I think it would help with the advertisement of the.
I need it, I need it.
Also move.
Motion's made to change the time, seconded by Johnson, made by Lowery, seconded by Johnson, to adjust the time for the January twenty-first meeting to begin at ten, and the public participation at nine-thirty. Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Any objection? That motion also passes unanimously. And now, we will.
Did you want?
We're not, not finished, I guess.
I was going to say, we talked about the one meeting in July.
What she just mentioned.
Right. So, if we were to go down that road, and talking with our budget director in order to get everything that we would need done, if you were going to only have one meeting in July, it'd be preferable for it to be the later meeting date.
So, you're proposing that we have the meeting on July twenty-first?
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be fine. It's the July, having it on July seventh would be more of a problem. So, if we could have it on the twenty-first, I think that would be, we could make it work.
Would, would it be any help to straddle it and have it on the fourteenth, or that wouldn't matter one way or another? Okay.
Not really.
He said it's okay. So, if we, by wants to make a motion to adjust the meeting of July twenty-first and to not have the meeting of July the seventh, I guess is what we'd be saying.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Denny, seconded by Gertman, to have only the one meeting July twenty-first in the month of July. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. We'll have one meeting July twenty-first, 2020. And, and then December of 2020, we also need to have only the one meeting, if we like. That's what we had said. So, if you want to have that on the fifteenth?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Johnson, seconded by Lowery, to have one meeting only in December, that be on December fifteenth. Any discussion? Any objection? The motion to have only the one meeting December fifteenth, 2020 passes unanimously.
What about October?
You're going to get us all in trouble.
Okay.
You do have.
Second it.
Quick, question it.
Sure.
The, the July meeting, so I'm trying to go through the calendar. The July meeting, you said July fourteenth?
No, twenty-first. I think we looked around so it wouldn't interfere with any events when we pull those dates up.
Well, I'm looking at the twenty-first of the NACO conference. I'm okay with doing it on the twenty-first, so it's not a big deal. the 21st, it's not a big deal, but, and that actually is the day that we're picking, but... Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're not moving around any dates to where it's not normally, like December 10th is not a typical council day. So, I wanted to make sure.
December, we stayed with the 15th.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. July 21st for the July meeting. All right. Now, we'll move to item 9A.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Chairman Kellian.
This is Brian.
Counsel. I'm Brian Rothwell, Activity Project Manager. I'm here for sponsorship, item 9A sponsorship for Volusia Literacy Council, Ninth Annual Lights for Literacy Gala that will be held December 5th, an amount of $1,500 for sponsorship.
Mr. Chair.
I'm wait, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move approval of the sponsorship of the Volusia Literacy Council, Ninth Annual Lights of Literacy Gala to be held on December 5th, 2019, and it will be honoring Frank Bruno.
Is there a second? Motion made by Wheeler, seconded by Denny's. Discussion. I will not be able to attend the function. We have a Volusia League of Cities annual meeting that night, so hopefully, we'll have people who can go and represent us. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Denny's.
I don't know if this is going to come up later in the discussion today?
I think it is.
Are we going to discuss this? You know where I'm going to go with this, council. Mr. Eckert, if we sponsor this, as council members, this is considered a gift, and how many, we've got to, we have to address this.
I thought Mr. Eckert was going to address that in his closing comments. I may be not correct in that.
I'm not assuming anything anymore.
Well, if you go, if the council member, or council member and spouse goes, the Ethics Commission has determined that to be a gift from the county for the value of the cost of an individual ticket. And I don't know what that is. I think Mr. Rothwell may have determined that amount, but that's, but that's what the Ethics Commission determined in October. So, I'm relaying its determination to you.
Well, it's more than a determination. It's a practical application, implementation, and, and what it means to us as colleagues. So, we sponsor these. This was our understanding that when we go, we're representing the county, but then to come back and say, well, if you take it, it's going to be a gift towards you, and you have to do disclosures, that's a whole new game. That's a whole new game for all of us.
Right.
So, so what is, and then how, so then every event, you're going to have to determine what the value is, correct?
We'll have to determine the value, the ticket, the value, not the gift.
So, when we do a sponsorship, I'm going to ask from here on out that that gets disclosed publicly on the sponsorship. Should we choose to sponsor, and should a council member choose to go to represent Volusia County in a sponsorship that we're going to do what the financial implications for each elected up here is? That's a, this is a game changer. This is a real game changer for us, and I'm just...
If, if I could put it maybe in some context, and I understand the council's, what may be the council member's frustration with this issue, the public purpose that you're being asked to sponsor this event, to support the various public purposes that these events involve, and the public purpose here is, is obviously literacy is one among the many public purposes that you confront, that you're asked to support. The Ethics Commission has issued an opinion, however, that says that the, if you go, even though you're being asked to attend to show community support for the, for the organization, that it's not a gift, that it is a gift from the county, not, and so therefore, the, you don't, whereas you might think of that you're going to eat a chicken dinner, and that's, that's, that's just part of the showing the community support if you choose to go, and not all of you can go at all times, and that it is a, that you do not exclude from the value of that gift, that, the amount that's implicit to be the charitable contribution above the food and beverage cost. Now, I, you know, we can, there may be further discussion or further elucidation of that opinion, but that's, that's the, what the commission determined in its, in its October 30 opinion. So, it, it's, I think it places the council members in an unfortunate position, and you may wish to change how you, how you wish to do business about, about this.
Let's take, let's use this little example we have right before us. That's 1,500. Let's say that it's eight people, and it's 1,600. That's $200 a person for any person that goes. Correct?
Well...
That, do I have a yes or no?
It'd be eight in the one, in 1,500, or...
I said, I rounded it up.
Yes, sir. Well, I think the opinion leaves some room for, with these, with these sponsorships. If, if it were, if the value of the ticket for an individual were $100, that's, I think there's still some room to be, to be determined whether, whether the value of the gift is 100 or 150, but it's going to be the, it's, the value is, is based upon the county's cost, and we'll seek some clarification from, from the Ethics Commission about that, but it's at least going to be the value of the ticket. So, if it's, if the value of the ticket here is $125, for example, then, then you would report one or two times 125, or, or in your example, Mr. Chair rounding 200, 400. And that, that doesn't, to me, that, that doesn't correspond to the, to the reality of the circumstance.
If the total amount is 1,500 or 1,600, what would be, because the understanding that I've had over the years was that the cost of the food would be what you would be responsible for. The other part, I mean, that's, was previously to this ruling, that the other part of us being there, doing our good duty of being there to represent the county, right? That we, we do that. We pay for the meal. Now, if it's something other than that, we're going to wind up sponsoring and have an empty table of eight.
Exactly.
Because I don't, I don't know that...
It may affect your decision how you want to handle these, these, these going forward, but...
But that, that also affects what we have not voted on, on this one, and who is going to be willing to go to this one and pay whatever it is to keep it from being over $100. I mean, that's the way I look at it.
Let's go in one more, Mr. Chairman. The awkward part about that is that you can't, that often, that sometimes you will, will choose to buy down a gift from a non-lobbyist.
Right. Well, no, I don't do that.
So, that, so that you're not required to disclose, to disclose a gift, that, a gift, a gift from a non-lobbyist, $100 or more.
A non-lobbyist is one thing, not, I thought you said lobbyist.
Is a legal gift, but you still may choose to, to buy down, or, or from a lobbyist. You may say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy it down below $25.
Right.
But here, what the commission has said, it's said two things, one of which, it's, its opinion speaks to maybe that they, they feel like it has been clear thus far. It hasn't, hadn't been clear to me, that the gift is from the county, and it's the cost of, of the gift to the county.
And what would that cost be?
Well, in your example, rounding, it's $200.
Right.
So, buying down the, the gift for, to, it's really not, not a very practical option at this point, because you're not buying down the gift to the charity. You're, you're, you're funding, you put the position of funding out of your pocket, the county's contribution to the charity, and effectively so. You're replacing money. So, it really, it really does call into question the sponsorship arrangement, and whether or not this is the best way to direct your funds to these organizations.
Okay.
But, but one is, one thing, if you choose to do this, it's, I would be remiss if I didn't forward to you, you didn't, the Ethics Commission opinion, and you got to rely yourself to God.
From what I've heard in the past, and I've been doing these things for a lot of years, it would be the value of the ticket, and if I was going by myself, it'd be $100. But one of the things we also have to think about is, is what kind of implication does this have for our income tax? If this is a gift, it also gets tacked on. I mean, you know, they're saying...
No, if it's a, if it's a non-recurring, if it's an occasional gift, it's not, I've anticipated this issue. We've looked at, it's not a taxable gift, but if it were a recurring gift, then it would have potential, recurring, a regular gift, it would have tax implications, but...
It would be a reoccurring if we're, if we're invited to all of these events, and we're supposed to pay.
But you don't all attend, you don't all attend all of them.
I would say the majority of us attend the majority of the events.
Well...
Eat bad chicken.
So, what's, what's reoccurring? What's that amount? And, and I'm like, Ben, you know, I mean, this affects, then we're paying, I don't know. I feel, I feel like, you know, we're there serving the county. We're there representing the county. We're there serving the county. We're working for the county. I, you know, this is...
Okay. But if we do have to declare it, there's no implications other than the declaration, correct?
If it's not, apart from what the question Mr. Johnson raises, if it's...
I understand that one. This is, I'm not worried about that one now, but I'm, I'm just saying, if we accept a gift greater than $100 from a non-lobbyan group or individual, we fill out a declaration quarterly that says, I received such and such, and that's really pretty much it.
Yes. I mean, it may, it may, but it, that's, as a matter of law, that, that's the answer to the question.
As a matter of law.
It appears, it makes it appears if you're receiving gifts...
From the county.
From the county that are beyond, much beyond the value of a, of a very nice chicken dinner.
Which we are prohibited from receiving anyway, based upon the charter.
Well, you receive, it's, the charter says we can't, you cannot be reimbursed for in-county expenses.
Right.
And what we've said is that the, the public purpose here is really the, the benefit to be provided for the organization, and it does call into question whether or not this is the best way to continue to do this.
Well, until it's totally cleared up, I'm not going to another one, just myself.
I'll buy my own ticket.
I've bought tickets individually this year. I will continue to buy tickets if I want to go. I've been invited based upon contributions, which are separate, that I've made that contribution to attend. I've been invited by others to sit at their table, for which I've compensated them for that cost, and I'll continue to do that personally, if we want to continue to sponsor. I think we're facing what you're saying until it's clear. And the other thing is, why are we going to sponsor an event and a table, and one person shows up at a table for the county, or nobody shows up, which calls in, which, Fred?
I was going to say, on some of these that we approve, until we get things cleared up, we probably should maybe get a letter to them to let them know the situation and why maybe no one would be there, rather than just the table be there and not show up. I think we need to inform these people, let them know something has changed in the, in the chemistry of all of this that may keep us from attending till things are clarified. Or not keep us from attending, but...
Do we have another one this year after this? Is it the furball, or?
Have one for next week, actually, I mean, next council meeting, one more, and then two in January, I believe.
Two in January?
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm going to go back...
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm going to go back to the original question. When this comes before us, if Legals going to make a determination, I believe it's within Legals' responsibility to council to add a caveat on this, that council, should you choose to go, this is the cost to you. You owe it to this council if you're going to make a determination on an ethics, and I understand that this just happened, but that being said, this discussion, you owe, you owe it to council to tell us exactly what implication it is to us. In the cost. In the cost. You and your department owe it to council to do that, and that's all I'm going to say. Until that happens, until that happens, I will continue to purchase my own tickets, and, and if there's not a remedy for this, then it throws into question the sponsorship of the events, because it's worse to, if you've ever gone to some of these events and then seen empty tables, that actually speaks more volume. That, that's just not a place that I think we want to be. So, so I'm going to, I'm going to wait, Mr. Eckert, for Legal to get clarity on this new decision, and you inform your council on what the implications are in each and every event, and have it vetted, and be able to respond to the council.
Okay. Ben, you've already had one question. I'm going to go to George, and then I'll come back to you.
As a follow-up to Dr. Lowery's point, I was going to ask, would it be the pleasure of the council, then, for Brian to contact, or either the people who have pending applications, and the ones we have sponsored in the past, with a letter explaining the Ethics Commission, possibly a copy of what has been provided to us, and suggest that we will not be taking these up until there's some sort of clarity. So, would you like us to go in that type of direction, so we don't have to struggle with it here?
Okay. Let's get the other people that haven't commented. Ms. Gertman?
I guess my question is, when would we likely have clarity? I certainly am not going to pay for a ticket ever to represent the county. We were elected to do a role to represent, and to me, that's part of it, and me personally, I'm not doing that. So, I hope we can get clarity on how we can go forward and continue to support our programs and residents and the critical programs that support it, but until that gets resolved, you'll never find that for me. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay. Ben?
You know, it's, maybe it's time we have to have this discussion again. The only people who push us for the money are the people who want it for these organizations, but in the general public, I hear more of, why are you spending our money for these things?
Ms. Denny's.
What if, what if we put a moratorium on support until Legal can give a determination, and we're all comfortable with where we go? Can't you give us a determination right here now?
Just a minute. Well, I can tell you that, that the determination is that, under the current arrangement, it would be, it would be a gift to you. The only, I think what Councilmember Denny's has fairly asked is what the amount of that gift is going to be in each circumstance, but, but the Ethics Commission is the official proponent of the law in this area. The only thing that you're, here essentially, Councilmember, or the chair, has indicated that it's going to be, the gift is going to be rounded $200 per person.
Every time.
It's at least going to be 100 and, well, I don't know what the actual ticket costs in this. Brian was looking into that as a...
It's $100.
So, is that...
Well, then...
What, what, sorry?
The individual tickets were $100, or are $100.
If we wanted to buy a ticket, we could go for 100.
$100.
If the county sponsors... If the county sponsors a table, we've got to declare we received a gift of $190. That makes no sense.
Well, we'll clarify, we'll clarify with the Ethics Commission that that amount, whether or not it's 100, 190, 90, but the, the, but few of these, it is going to put you into a reportable gift circumstance, the issue is the amount.
An example was that just happened at the last event. One of our elected people, state-elected, walked in, gave a check for $100, and it was good to go.
Well, that was...
They didn't have a table sponsored, but individually, they walked in and was told by the people that organized the event, "You give me a check for $100, and you're good to sit." And he did.
Well, that covered the cost, for that event, that covered the cost of the food and beverage.
Right. So, that's all he got.
That's right.
What else did he receive, by being there, representing the state, or an area?
Well, if it's, if it's a gift from the charity, the Ethics Commission addresses that, and you, the cost of the ticket would include what otherwise would be a...
Okay, but here's the difference. If anybody could buy a ticket for $100, right, why should we be penalized, the greater amount above that, for being there as sponsored by the county? We're not receiving anything but the $100.
But the Ethics Commi...
They're wrong. If I could go buy a ticket...
They may be wrong, but they're final.
But, council, if we can go buy a ticket for $100, right, and yet we're going to have to declare that it's, let's say 200, just to round it off to 1,600, eight of us go, that's 200 apiece, but I can go buy a $100 ticket and get in the same way?
I'm buying a ticket.
I'm buying a ticket.
In that instance, the Ethics Commission, in the example that you gave, the Ethics Commission said if it's, the issue is who, who's giving you the gift? Because that determines what the value is.
We could all individually go, if we want to go, and pay $100, and say, "We are representing the Volusia County, we just don't have our names on the table," or whatever.
So where did it become our gift, and not the gift of the, you know, the literacy council? Yeah. Why, how did it come, become our gift?
If...
We're giving that money to them.
I'm not, I'm not saying I even agree with the reasoning, but it is...
Okay. I don't know that we're going to solve all of it tonight, today. This is something, it's going to have to be cleared up, I think, before I go to another one. We do have a motion and a second on the floor for this one.
I would like to ask one question.
Okay, sure, Fred.
If we were to sponsor, because we've got two that are kind of depending, thinking that we're coming, or thinking that we're going to sponsor, let's take this example. If we sponsor this, but we do not attend, we don't have to declare anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, we could go ahead on these two that we've got to finish out this year, sponsor them, send them a letter explaining what's happened, let them know that we, there may or may not be attendance from the county council, that would, well, I can't make a motion because there's already one on the floor, but that's what's my thinking, would be a solution.
Well, we can do that after this.
Yeah, we don't need a motion.
No.
Okay.
We don't need a motion on that, we can just not, when it comes up to sponsor, we wouldn't sponsor. Last year, the fur, the furball, or the other one, not the furball last year, but it was the Halifax Humane Society. I bought my own ticket, went, paid, paid both of those, and yet we still sponsored. But I wouldn't be required to declare anything, since I bought my own ticket.
If you, yes, sir, but to your point, if you, if you buy whatever is the, the ticket for the cost of the event, and you pay, and you write your individual check, there is implicit in that a charitable contribution, you're going to, that you should be getting acknowledgement from the, from the charity.
The county is getting the acknowledgement, not us individually.
But just because of the...
I understand, I just don't like it.
Well, I'm not saying I like it, I'm just trying to explain it to you.
Right.
If you, if you, in this instance, if you, if the council gives $1,500, and I don't know what the food and beverage cost is for this event, if, if the charity accepts your check for the food and beverage, that's not a gift from, from the county, and you can go, they don't have to issue, give you a ticket for that, but if they issue...
Okay. But we all know why it's, $1,500 was the limit we had set, but that's what this is, it's $1,500 for the county to be sponsored, okay? But we could all individually go buy tickets for X, because you get your name as a sponsor, you're paying more as a contribution. So we're being penalized for a contribution to a 501(c)(3) representing the county that we're having to then declare. So, let's, Ms. Dennis, let's, let's go ahead and get this one off the dais, and we can discuss this in closing comments if we want.
Final, I just, final comment, here's the thing, you're assuming for $1,500, you're getting eight seats. Last time, from what I'm hearing, they're not giving this whole table, four seats.
Four, last time, yeah.
So the last one, the value is $375 to walk in and represent the county. So, this has got some real numbers and some real impact to it, as we've had these discussions, Mr. Eckert, as you know. So, so you're right, we need to have this discussion, but until that's clean, cleared up, we need...
Well, I think the suggestion that Dr. Lowry had is one that we can address when the votes come up for next year, and we can just let people know. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the sponsorship for the Volusia Literacy Council Annual Lights for Literacy? Any objections to that motion? Here none, the motion passed as unanimous. That's a good discussion, and glad that we had it. And this is TBC. To be continued. The issue, not this one. Okay, item 10.
Good morning again, Chairman Kelly and council, I'm Brian Rockwell, Activity Project Manager for County Manager's Office. I will be presenting the third quarter Dynamic Master Plan update for 2019. Twenty matrices were updated to reflect accomplishments this quarter. Dynamic Master Plan falls on a thriving community's economic, financial fidelity and, fidelity and excellence in government. County council did several things, I'm just going to point out a few. Council approved the State Housing Initiative Partnership Program for $1.4 million for homeowners for counseling homebuyer assistance and housing and rehab and reconstruction projects. Council also approved the Laihe program for $2 million for program outreach expenses and direct client assistance. Council approved the Volusia Blue Program Implementation Agreement with the cities, with cities of Deland, Deltona, and Orange City. Council also approved Joint Participation Agreements with St. John's Water River, St. John's River Water Management District, to purchase Borough Pit for Aquafor Recharge Project with Deland, Deltona, and Orange City. This quarter, council also approved the budget, the 2019, 2020 budget for the General Fund Avalarm Tax at a rate of 5.5900. And council also approved for the Corrections Department, the Inmate Calling Solutions LLC for inmate and public telephone system and video visitation system. Following slides are just some things that council has done this year. Right now, with this slide here is the Taxi November Project, it's currently in Phase Five, and should be finished late summer next year. This, our 2019 Summer Food Program, which ended August 9. The program operated 58 unique sites throughout Volusia County, serving about 60,000 breakfasts and 77,000 lunches to low-income children for the summer program, which is great for citizens. This next, here is our, on May 6, council approved the, council saw, solid waste and begin the landfill construction sale, which is 12-point acres of north landfill sale, which should be completed somewhere in early part of 2020. We also have Halifax Indian River Cleanup and International Coastal Cleanup each year on the third Saturday in September. We had 1,631 volunteers, and we were able to remove 7,302 pounds of trash on that particular day. County council also celebrated the completion of Aggrissey Parking Lot in Omen by the Sea. This includes 42 paid parking spaces, showers, and a back rack and ADA accessible ramp to the beach. This is our STEM program, where we educate our students about information for self-protection measures, and how increasing community involvement and the reduction of standing water and ground homes is our critical in their mission. And in August, we also opened up the Cardinal Off-Beak Parking Lot. This included 124 parking spaces, some six handicap spaces, and beach and coastal operation facilities. I just went through a couple of the things that I felt were important. All right, any questions, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move, Ted, move to item 11, Capital Projects Update.
Yes, sir, good morning. Ted Kaysbeer, County Engineer. Brian hit on a good, good number of things that the county's accomplished this year. This being the final quarter, wanted to highlight some of the things that were completed on the capital project side. We completed 14 large projects in the county this last year, three of them in the, in this most recent quarter. Overall, the last six months has been very productive, we, the three this quarter, and then we also had eight in the third quarter as well, so we've, we've accomplished quite a bit this year. This quarter, we finished the Shell Harbor Park Project up in the northwest quadrant of the county, we'll actually have the ribbon cutting on December 5. We also completed the Ocean Center Marquee Restoration Project, and then also, as Brian noted, the Cardinal Avenue Off-Beach Parking was completed as well. There were several different projects that schedule were adjusted on for various different reasons. If you have a question on any of those, we can certainly discuss those. We wanted to highlight the road program this afternoon, and as a part of that, wanted to go ahead and cover some of the major road projects that we've been working on here in the county. The first one is the 10th Street Road Widening Project. It goes from Myrtle Avenue, thank you, from Myrtle Avenue to US 1, widening from two lanes to four. Myrtle West was previously four-laned, we've been working on this segment for, well, quite some time, and we're more than happy to announce that we're going to be going out for bid, advertising for bid this month, to move this project forward. The roadway crosses the FEC Railroad about midway through the project, and that's been a large sticking point for a number of years, unfortunately, but we do think that we've got an agreement reached with them to allow this to continue to move forward, so. One of the things I do want to note, in advance of the road program, you see the funding sources, if you go back to the previous slide, see our funding sources, and you can see there are three or four different funding sources that we have on these major projects. With all these major projects, with the way the costs are these days, there's no way to fund them with just one funding source. So, for example, on 10th Street, we've got the local option gas tax, some of our remaining bond funds, we also have the Seber Grant, which is a state grant, that program no longer exists, we've been working on this project for that long, so. The next major project we've got coming up is the Howland Boulevard Widening Project. It's located in Deltona, it's the last segment of Howland Boulevard to be widened from two to four lanes, it'll go from Providence on the west end over to El Cam on the east. That project, we're going to be going out for advertisement for bids in December. We do have one final meeting with the city of Deltona, their city commission. For utility purposes, we're actually going to have to shut down a portion of the westbound traffic between El Cam and Austin, due to the sanitary sewer system in that area, it's quite old, and the materials are such that we're not going to be able to work over the top of them, so we can't maintain traffic through that section for the westbound. The city commission, the utility for Deltona, will be presenting that to them and explaining what's going on, so. All right. Next project we have is Orange Camp Road here in Deland. This will be widening from two lanes to four lanes, going from the interstate interchange there on the east side to, to the west of Martin Luther King, where it'll go from four lanes and taper back down to two prior to getting to Blue Lake Avenue. Of note on this project, the signalized intersection at Martin Luther King and Orange Camp will be converted to a roundabout, that'll be the first one that the county has done on our own, there are others that the state has done in the county, but this will be the first one that, that we have done. We are optimistic, based on the modeling, that the traffic will move much better through this busy intersection, and provide relief along those lines through 2040, so. The advertisement for the bidding on this will also be going out in December. And then the last project we wanted to highlight as part of the capital project schedule update is Williamson Boulevard. This section of Williamson Boulevard was actually part of a larger project that ran all the way from LPJ up to Hand Avenue. It was designed to be four-laned back in 2011, we did not have the funding for the construction at that point. As we have moved along, we've had the benefit of collecting quite a bit of proportionate fair share funding in this area, due to all the development in this section. And so we put that towards this project, and you can see, when you look at the funding sources, if you go to the previous page for me, that, there we go, you can see just how many development projects have actually contributed a proportionate fair share to this project, and the amount that was there, and that was actually the first funding we got for construction on this project, and then we were able to use that to, to obtain a grant from the State Department of Economic Opportunity for approximately $2 million, and therefore, that allowed us to move forward with this construction project. You can see the amount of money that the county's putting in, 780,000, that's a pretty small amount on our part, to be utilized to, to build a project of approximately 5.1 million dollars. This project has already been bid, we've got the contractor selection coming before you in December. Based on the numbers that we've got, we'll actually be coming in $200,000 less than our construction cost estimate, so we're very pleased about that, so. Any questions on the capital project schedule?
Yes, I just want to ask about a couple of the parks. The Sun 'n Surf Park, it's being held up by a Daytona Beach objection to the county ordinance preempting the municipal, where are we, where do we stand on that, have we?
I'll ask Jessica to come up, and she can give you a better answer than I can.
Good morning, Jessica Winterp, Coastal Director for Volusia County. We submitted a set, three sets of plans to the Building Director and the Planning Director at the city of Daytona Beach Friday, two weeks ago, allowing them to do a cursory review. We are going to need a permit from the city, because they will be our utility provider to provide water for the showers, so they do have a point of comment there. I have not heard from them as of yet, I was going to send a tickler email today, I already sent them three dates that we'd be willing to meet with them. I'm hoping to get it on the books this Friday, if not, it's most likely going to have to wait until after Thanksgiving, but we're, we're kind of sitting on that right now.
And while you're there, Jessica, if I could ask you about the Edwin Peck, 60% of the plans are complete, and I guess this could also include Dahlia, permit application submitted in August, have we heard anything more about those? I would just love for the Peck Park to get moving as soon as possible, he's 101, and he really is wanting to be, be cutting that ribbon, so.
Both the Peck Park, as well as the Dahlia Improvement Project, are pending our CCCL permit, which comes from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The, we received requests for additional information a couple of weeks ago, we replied to the request for additional information, and we're waiting for the state to give us a permit, once we get the permit from the state, because they look at your seawalls, they look at your Dean walkovers, they look at your structures inside the CCCL line to see what you're putting in there. Once we get that, we're going to initiate the third-party review, under our agreement with the city, for the building inspections.
When did we send that last information to them?
About two weeks ago. Unfortunately, Ted can tell you, once we start getting into the November, December plan review timeframe, it just drops off an edge of cliffs, I mean, it's rough.
They all take, take off. George?
Just, I will have to talk to the city manager, I believe, on those particular projects, because there has been communication back that, that they, well, we at least need to talk, let's put it that way, they haven't... They haven't accepted our process. Sun 'n Surf, yes, in the City of Daytona.
Ms. Gertman?
I just had a question about the 800 megahertz radio system. When, when is that anticipated?
The RFP has been out. I believe there's been a few requests for further information that it requires some extension. I believe the new date is middle of January. It's due. So we should have our bids in, or the proposals in in January. And then it'll go through the selection process.
Thank you.
Any other question? If not, there's no, no need for a motion on this one. We'll move to item twelve.
Yeah, twelve, I asked, there's been some talk, of course, there was some talk yesterday, I know, at the roundtable. It's important, this county has always had a five-year road program. It's just that it doesn't change like it used to. So it used to be every year there was a need to update, and it's been a couple of years because there's really been no money to add anything to the road program. So I asked Tad and John to take a look, now that we're getting some impact fees, we're getting a few more proportionate shares. It's time now to put together and look at projects that are, that are doable, not a wish list. These are things that are needed and could be done. And so we're going to seek some direction here today from you, from the council to, are these areas you want to go? Because we'll need to start spending some money in either feasibility studies or design. And there are a few small safety projects that we could also put in too. So it's really a, a good thing. I wish it was a bigger thing, but right now, it's, it's the idea of, you know, let's take a look now where these monies could go and start activating the program again. Tad?
Again, Tad Caysbeer, County Engineer. We'll jump right into the presentation. The county has quite a few assets that we maintain. So we collect gas taxes, impact fees, different funds and sources. And we use portions of that money to go ahead and maintain the assets we have. And you take a look at that list, and it's a pretty impressive list. The million miles, or million linear feet of pipe was the one that stood out for me. Keeps Ben Bartlett and his group pretty busy.
Again, it's a state, it's a state-sized system. You know, we have, we're spread out. It's, we have tremendous amount of assets out in the ground, on the ground now. So considerable amount of money has to be spent to maintain and rehabilitate all these assets. And they do wear out. They do have a life. And so that's something that we're also have to build in. A lot of what we talk about with roads and the, and the road program, and Tad will go over it a little bit more in a minute, is capacity expansion, which is certainly very important. But you also have, again, you have assets in the ground now that are forty, fifty, sixty years old that need replacement as well. And then there are safety issues that we have to address. So just pointing out the size of what's out there.
Okay, so that's what we've got to maintain, but we also need to add to that. Now, we construct our roads using our road program. We've got several different sources of funding for it. Gas tax is the most commonly understood one. We collect a local option gas tax of 12 cents, particularly five cents of that is set aside for construction of new road projects. We also collect impact fees. We raised those last year. We implemented it at seventy-five percent, and in November, or pardon me, in March, we'll be implementing it at a hundred percent. That's charged to new developments. When they come in and construct something, they pay that. Proportionate fair share, those same developments that come in, if they are adding trips to the road and cause it to fail, then they pay a proportionate cost to fix that failure, so to speak. So we mentioned in the capital project schedule, we've been collecting quite a few proportionate fair shares, particularly in the northeast quadrant of the county. We also have some bond money. That'll actually be eaten up with the, three of the major projects that we talked about earlier this morning, Tenth Street, Orange Camp, Howland. And after that, we won't have any bond money left from the oh-three, oh-four, $65 million bond. We also do get grants from both the state and federal levels. Those haven't been as common as they have been in the past. Most of the ones we have upcoming in the next few years are really tied to safety-style projects, not capacity projects. So, gas taxes, mentioned that we collect those. As you can see from this, they're pretty dang steady. No matter what the economy is doing, it generally stays about level now. There is obviously some impact from the economy, but, but not on a major scale. Conversely, the transportation impact fees vary quite a bit, depending on how the economy is doing. You can see the last, last year, eighteen, nineteen, and then what we're projecting for this year, we do expect a large increase. We are very optimistic that hopefully that will continue. Obviously, the economy is the largest driver of that. But you can also see in the past years, even when the economy has stayed fairly steady, it, it varies quite a bit from year to year. There's other things that, that will tie into that, and we'll get into that a little bit later on, that'll affect our impact fee amounts in future years. But you can see, one of the reasons that the impact fees are important is that's what we use to secure or to pay back our, our bond repayment. So four and a half million dollars each year come out of the impact fees to pay that bond back. And we're going to be paying that back, as noted on there, until 2024. So four and a half million dollars a year come off the top. Now, to understand what we collect generally each year, to give you a feel for what we have available on an annual basis, we collect for the new nickel, approximately 6.5 is what we're projecting. And remember, that one stays pretty steady. Right off the bat, we have to pay back a million-dollar loan on the Williamson project that ran from Airport.
Jeff, I guess you're trying to fix, we're getting it up there, but we're not getting it on the dais. But don't let that stop it. Maybe he can get it fixed. Well, I can too, but I just wondered why. Okay, sorry, Ted.
No, no problem. You can see from the gas tax, we collect typically about six and a half million, a million dollars of which we, right off the bat, pay back to, or is used to pay back the Williamson loan. The Williams section runs from Airport South down to Pioneer Trail that was previously done. So we're down at five and a half million. Then the impact fees, we showed on the previous chart, we expect to collect approximately eleven and a half million dollars. But you subtract off the bond payment, and then you look at what we've got left per zone, because the impact fees are collected in a particular zone. They have to be expended in that particular zone. You can see what we have available for each of the different zones. Then also, just to give a feel, we show what we're collecting or will be expending this year in proportionate fair share on particular projects. You can see that's actually a pretty good amount of money coming from the private side. And then we were very fortunate on, on grants. Two million dollars of that is, is the Williamson. And then we've also another 2.8 that come forward on another, on the Tenth Street project. And then we have a small amount of federal money as well coming in. So that gives you a feel for what our annual year looks like. And keep in mind that that impact fee amounts collected, you know, as shown on the previous slide, that's the second-most amount that we've collected since oh-three, oh-four. So the projects that we already have on the road program as it stands right now, we have the Veterans Memorial Bridge, which is under construction, and hopefully will be completed rather soon. You can see all of that money, all of that project was funded by the federal government. And so we're happy to have that contribution. Otherwise, you can see from that dollar amount, that's a huge project for us, one of the largest, if not the largest, road project that the county has overseen. And then we also have the Williamson Project, which runs from LPGA to Strickland. We covered that earlier in the capital project schedule. We also have the another, the next section of Williamson north of that that gets from Strickland up to Hand, and that'll widen out. And of note on this one, you can see, again, much like the, the Williamson one above, developer proportionate fair share is a huge driver in the funding of this. We've also been able to, to get state appropriations totaling $4 million, $2 million each of the last two years for this particular project. Of note to me is the three and a half million dollars that we show right now for developer proportionate fair share. When I started preparing this presentation two months ago, that number was $700,000. And so we've had projects that you've approved. You had the Madison Apartments three meetings ago for $450,000. You had the Integrated LPGA at the last meeting for a million and a half. And then we have another one that'll be at the December tenth meeting for $910,000. So with proportionate fair share, money can show up out of the blue pretty dang quickly. And we don't always have an idea of what's coming even a year ahead. So planning using that type of money is rather tough.
Also, unfortunately, you need the kind of synergy that is occurring along there, which also creates the current congestion. But if you don't have enough projects at one time, you, you can't piece together enough money to do the project. But that's, in this case here, there does happen to be enough happening in that corridor. And if you remember back, we talked well over a year ago about pipelining and the work that we've done and legal department and, and Tad, they've worked together with the cities, which has allowed these monies to be put onto a significant project. It's something that we don't do in a vacuum, and we, and we work with the cities to address the need that we can. If it just came in in a very slow fashion, which is what typically happens, or your impact fees themselves, you would never have that opportunity. And remember that, that the proportionate share is really, you're getting your impact fees ahead of time, or at a set time ahead. You're not, you know, it's not money that's coming in. It's just really taking the impact fee money and putting it together to put the improvement in place.
Right. And that's a large benefit to us. Getting that money upfront, one, if the economy slows down, then it may spread that dollar amount over quite a number of years. It allows us to get the money upfront, and then hopefully, like we're doing with the Williamson project, build that in advance of any additional traffic impacts that'll be occurring with future developments, so. And with the Williamson, Strickland to Hand, you see that the amount pending is down to 2.1. We're getting close to the point where, with the money that we have in reserves, we could easily potentially fund that as well. We're planning on, at this point, continuing to pursue grants from other allocations, potentially to try and make up that shortfall. And if we don't, then potentially next year, we'd come back and make a recommendation, assuming we've got the local option gas tax available or some other source, to, to go ahead and move forward with construction using that to fill in that gap, so. All right, over New Smyrna Beach, we are, we have a project to add paved shoulders to Pioneer Trail from Turnbull over to Sunset. That's federally funded through the TPO. They gave us money as part of the safety projects for that particular project. We've got, in Edgewater, we've got West Park Avenue, which we've discussed a few times, going from two lanes to three. Construction is almost complete on that, and we expect it to be open that first week, second week of December for full traffic. Tenth Street Project, we covered as part of the capital project schedule. I had noted on that one just the various funds that were tied to it. Just to give an example on what that comes out to, that's actually a .6-mile-long project. And estimated construction cost at this point is $10 million. So we typically throw out there that $5 million is the average to add two lanes to, or construct a new two-lane road, or add two lanes to an existing facility. You can see that's not always the, the case. There's certainly times like this one where it's much higher. Usually, that's driven by something like, in this case, the railroad crossing and realigning the Gabardi Canal to accommodate the, the road section, so. All right. Deltona, we've got the Howland Project we discussed already. Again, it's a high price tag with $2.2 million and $14 million worth of construction, so. Orange City, we've got the Graves Avenue Widening. This is a safety project between Veterans Memorial and Kentucky to add a third lane in there. That road section, much like several of the roads on the west side of the county at peak hour, gets to be rather congested. This will help, help both of those two intersections move right along. And again, it's federal funding, so we, we are expending very little for that particular improvement. Deland, we covered the Orange Camp Road Project already, but we do have some, some other projects in that area. We've got Beersford Avenue has been on, on our road program for quite some time. It's actually continued to be pushed back. A big part of that is we want to get the right-of-way from the city and from a developer. They're both working towards that. We have an agreement that'll be coming to the council here shortly that'll work out the donation of both of those pieces moving forward. This previously had a higher priority when the DOT had committed to constructing the eastern extension that would have taken it from Martin Luther King Kepler over to State Road 44. When they had a change at the top levels, that commitment wavered. And so at this point, that's why it continued to fall down our list. We do now have, with all the development going on in that area in conjunction with the City of Deland, they have a developer on that east side, and we'll be working with them to get the right-of-way and portions of that constructed as well so that we can get that extension all the way over to State Road 44, which, for this area of the, of the county, would be vitally important. The State Road 44 and Kepler intersection is one of the busiest in the county, and it's certainly not one you want to have to pass through during the peak hour, so. This would give us an alternative so that the people that are going south can at least move off and avoid that intersection, so. We also have west of town leading out to, to the train station, Old New York Avenue, adding paved shoulders. Again, it's primarily federally funded to help with the safety. We'll be widening the asphalt through that section, because I'm sure Mr. Reckmahl can tell you that the lanes out there are very narrow, and this will certainly be an improvement for the traffic headed out that way. And then finally, on the current road program, we have the Amelia Avenue Project. This is a road diet going from four lanes down to three for the section here in Deland that goes from Boris to Ohio. There's quite a bit of, quite a bit of accidents on this portion. That's why it qualified for safety money at the state level. And we're more than happy to, to implement the proposed improvements, so. So that's what we have on our existing program. An idea of what, what our needs are throughout the county. Now, some of these roads are state roads, but any of the roads that have color on them are roads that are either at critical or near-critical levels. Some based on today's current traffic. Some of that is today's traffic plus traffic from proposed developments coming forward. So you can see that there's quite a bit in the county that, that needs improvement. We did go ahead and highlight, we have three road segments that are in our current road program that, that are up there that we'll be addressing. But you can see that that's not, not nearly enough to take care of the problems throughout the county. But that's where we have the needs, so. Our potential future road projects, now, all the projects in this grouping have some form of funding associated with them, whether it's a proportionate fair share, or money that we're allocating from either our impact fees or potentially a grant, something of that nature. And that's what's driving it. We didn't, we could put together a long list of priorities in the county, but if we don't have any money for it, it doesn't do us much good, so. These are the projects that we think at some point can move forward in some aspect and puts us potentially, in some cases, in a better position to get grants, or to chase grants, or to, to sit on the project until such time as we can stockpile some of that money that we're collecting each year and not expending, so. The LPGA Project from two lanes to four lanes, crossing the Tamaka River Bridge, going from the interchange at Inie to Five, west over to Timber Creek, that's a big project. We've got two and a half million dollars that was previously provided as part of a development approval for the Mosaic Development, specifically for, for this project, pardon me. And we're currently doing a feasibility study on it, but we'll be using the money that's collected as a part of that proportionate fair share agreement to hire a design consultant to prepare the road plans and bridge plans for the project. And again, we'll use that as a seed to go chase other funding sources. The good news that we've got, the feasibility study is, is not quite complete, but it's very close. The bridge cost, which was originally estimated as a worst-case scenario of $25 million, looks like it's going to be more in the neighborhood of $10 million, so. That cost will be able to come down, and that'll obviously change our potential funding for that in the future. Of note on this one, we also do have, the DOT is looking at widening the interchange, making some improvements to that. And they're actually going to go up to six lanes on their portion. And we certainly don't want to be ahead of them. Not that with that amount of funding to make up, we would likely be ahead of them. But we certainly don't want to be too far behind, because you don't want six lanes narrowing down to two. That would just make for one heck of a snarl, so. So. The next pair of projects are actually intertwined. In the Port Orange area, we have $221,000 that we collected from a developer as a part of proportionate fair share payment. And without any set projects in that area, we don't have a specific project to allocate that money to. We looked at two different options, and not that we're looking for an immediate decision, but we do want you to think about this. We're looking for direction as to which you would potentially pursue. There are two good options for the traffic problems over there. Dunlaughton in Port Orange is a large problem from a traffic standpoint, one that can't be solved by adding more lanes at this point. So really, as far as county staff's opinion is, the only way to move forward is to provide as many alternate routes for the citizens in that area as possible. Taylor Branch Road currently tees into Dunlaughton just east of the I-95 interchange. It turns south and then makes an elbow turn and goes back to the east and ties in over at Spruce Creek High School where the road widens back out to four lanes. We think that this is an excellent opportunity from a traffic standpoint to widen that out and provide a reliever to the Dunlaughton Avenue traffic problems. They would have to cross the B-19 canal over there, so we would need to widen the existing bridge or most likely replace that existing bridge, and it would certainly impact commercial development. There's some residential areas in there and a church as well, although those would potentially be impacted. But our recommendation would be to take a portion of that 221,000 and then study the feasibility of the project. We've identified an $8.1 million cost, but that really is not very detailed. That was just general numbers and our best guess at this point in time. Feasibility would allow us to identify really what the proposed construction costs for that project would need to be. The other option is to apply that to the Taylor Road Project, which, much like the Williamson Project, was designed back in 2011, 2012, to go from summer trees to forest preserve, widening it from two to four lanes. Could use that money to update those plans. That said, if we don't identify construction funds for it within the next three years, we would need to go through another update phase, which at this point, we don't expect to have the construction funds within the next three years. So if that were your preference, what I'd recommend is we sit on that money and wait until we get closer to identifying that amount overall. And then there's always the third option, we could just sit on that money until we have a more viable option come forward.
Ms. Gertman.
So for the record, can you tell me about the project for, was it US Highway 17?
Could we wait until we get to the end of the presentation on that one?
Oh, I thought we were, I thought.
No, I'm sorry, I'm still.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, I had to drone on a little bit longer.
Okay.
My bad.
Sorry.
All right, my bad too.
No, no, you're up there and y'all are both up there.
Yeah, I've got a couple more.
You stopped, you paused too long to breathe.
Mine's on this one.
I saw a hesitation pushing for a button, so I stopped. My apologies.
If it's on, if it's on this issue, you still want to wait, on this one, you want to wait?
Sure, if you've got a question specific to this one, I'd.
Okay. Deb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I specifically want to talk to the Port Orange, two options here because you need direction. The last thing we want to do is spend money and not have the construction dollars and lose what we invested. The key to this and talking with you about this, and of course, sitting on TPO, we know that the best investment is if we can get, are we in the feasibility study? Have we done that yet or is that, that's where you would start?
No, that's what we would use the 221,000 or a portion of it to fund that.
So that would be the most rational.
That is our opinion.
Progression going forward on this. So we've got option number one and option number two basically under this category?
Yes, ma'am.
So with that, counsel, and those of you that sit on TPO and the discussions that we've had, if the money's there and we can get the feasibility, there's less risk there and we can come to an outcome with a feasibility study versus updating a plan and possibly losing that money because no construction dollars come forward. Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that accurate? Okay. All right, want to make sure. So do you need direction from this council now or is this just information?
It's just information because this is the first you've seen it, and I certainly don't want you to make a decision without having some thought to it. So. All right. In New Smyrna Beach, we've got the Old Mission Road, safety improvements. Now, this is something that we haven't typically done because we don't generally have the money for it overall. When we do work on our roads, we do one of two things. We either come in and mill and resurface the existing facility, and that's all we do. We don't make any other improvements to that road section. We cover that as a part of our annual resurfacing contract. We also have, as you see with most of these others, capacity improvements where we go in and add lanes. We don't really have anything in that middle ground where you have an existing road that doesn't meet today's design standards and in some cases, some of our safety standards. We generally allocate a million and a half dollars in our engineering and construction budget for those types of projects. We don't typically spend all of that amount. It's more as things come up. And so when that money doesn't get spent, it just gets reallocated, goes into the reserves, and eventually gets used for one of our capacity projects. What we're proposing is we know that we have at least five or six major road segments that have what we consider safety issues that need to be addressed in some way, shape, or form. When we looked at it, Old Mission Road from Josephine down to West Park was the worst offender. It's got that canal on the east side, almost immediately off the edge of pavement. You certainly would not feel comfortable pulling your road or your car over on that side of the road. And so that's the project that we've earmarked. We'd like to allocate approximately half of our million and a half each year to that project, and we'd save that money up over time. And then once we have enough, we would go ahead and construct that particular improvement. Nice thing about it, if it's stockpiles, if we have another safety need that comes up for some reason in advance of it, we could always shift and do things like that. But we're now allocating it specifically for something so that it doesn't get lost in the rest of the reserves.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
I asked you this the other day, but I wanted it to go on record. So on these, this safety money, would the intersection, the Pioneer Trail, that one would be?
Yes, ma'am. At Tamoca Farms Road, yes. If we don't find or identify any other alternate sources for funding, and we're currently pursuing that at the state and federal levels, if we can't make that work, then yes, ma'am, we could certainly allocate. And we could do that and this as well. We could use the portion that we aren't tying to this particular project to that. Yes, but we can certainly tackle that as well. Okay. Orange City, Veterans Memorial Parkway. This is the section from Coles on up to the Rhode Island section. A portion of this has already been four-lane. There's a development going in on the west side, and they're four-laning as they go along. When we calculated out their proportionate fair share, the road widening that they were doing did not cover the entire amount that they would technically owe. So what we worked out with them is they're paying the design, paying for the design, which is, you see the $185,000 there. They'll design the road plans for the remaining section that would be widened all the way up to Rhode Island, so that if we can find a funding source, this was one of the ones we had potentially earmarked for pursuing with the state. We've got the design plans being funded by a private group. It makes it more attractive when you're pursuing a grant. And so that's why that's on here. Then we have down in DeBury, we've got Dirksen Drive, the widening of that. We've got a proportionate fair share for $150,000, and we want to move forward with studying that. There's a question as to whether or not three lanes or four. We're of the opinion that three lanes with a reversible lane in the middle to help offset traffic issues. They have problems down there, particularly peak hour, but also anytime there's an accident on I-4, Dirksen and 1792 become the workaround, and then people actually will cut through the neighborhoods if they can't get through quick enough. And that's a primary concern for the city of DeBury. And then finally, in Deland, we've got the Blue Lake Avenue Extension. This, you'll actually see an agreement coming forward on this, the next council meeting as well. It is the extension of Blue Lake south from Victoria Park down to 472. This is a much-needed point of connection to the Victoria Park Development. Their developer will be contributing 1.3 million, and then we would use impact fees collected in this area to make up the difference. But we've got, that section of Victoria Park is one of the largest of the four quadrants. It would be very helpful because it allows that southwest quadrant to avoid having to get out either on Martin Luther King or Orange Camp in close proximity to where our future roundabout is going to be, and that will help alleviate some of the traffic problems down there as well. So. And the last item we have on here is working in conjunction with Department of Transportation to help speed hopefully the State Road 44 and Kepler roundabout along. We have agreed to, or we're seeking to agree to pay for the right-of-way acquisition to help move that forward. Now, the 3.9 that we'd originally earmarked for this was actually based on not just their cost estimate, but that was originally the amount we were going to spend on Beersford. The whole idea behind Beersford originally was to fix this intersection. We've now got enough impact fees in this particular zone simply because we've been collecting them for quite some time in this area and haven't built anything of recent note that utilized those fees. We can afford to do this with the funds we have collected, and we also know that at this point, there are three of the four quadrants of that intersection are donating land or have donated land as a part of redevelopment or development of those particular parcels. So that 3.9 assumes none of that donation in the past, so we know that that dollar amount is likely to come down quite a bit. So. And that completes the list of projects that we are proposing to add to the five-year work program.
Ms. Gertman, you have a question now?
He remembers.
Ma'am. We contacted the Department of Transportation, and there was a, they forwarded over the email that Mr. Hilton sent to the Citizen, and I don't recall her name specifically.
It's Dillion Springs Association.
And there was nothing in there that mentioned that the county was the one that had made the determination on that. That there was a misinterpretation and a follow-up phone call apparently associated with that, but DOT has stated that no, that is not, it was not reallocated based on direction from the county.
Ms. Dennis.
So we had received communication from a resident, and she's over the Dillion Springs Association, concerned about the delay in US 17 widening. And I think that was also discussed at the TPO.
The DOT's work program, they just deferred the construction costs on that from the five-year work program, I think out to 2030 or 2029, thereabouts. They did leave the right-of-way in there, but obviously that was a big question for the Dillion Springs Association, part of which, from what I understand, their biggest concern was the roundabout at Spring Garden, which is a huge traffic snarl. And then you also had the trail that runs north, which will be a continuation of the trail that we're putting in up to Spring Garden. So those were their primary concerns, and there may be something that if the trail is an issue, that DOT could advance or pay for that separately under one of their trail funds. That's always a possibility. But the question had come in, it was represented, that the county had directed the DOT to allocate those funds to other projects that were more important to the county, and that was not the case. We had, we're not even consulted in which projects were deferred and which ones were advanced.
So I wanted to be assured that that gets on the record, that the county did not have anything to do with that direction. So thank you.
And DOT acknowledged that, and then you mail it, and I'll pass it on.
Thank you.
Ms. Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to the slide of the road program revenue sources because we don't get to have this conversation all that often. And this is a, this is a time to have it. So this is where the revenue comes from, right? Do we use any general fund revenue dollars?
Zero.
In what we do here?
None.
So that being said, I hear constantly, we'll just go through the budget, it's in there, I'm going to cut it, I'm going to find it, and you, you're just not using the money. We hear that all the time. I was just on a radio show, and I hear it again, and I said, well, others are saying you're just not doing your work and you're not drilling down hard enough, and you can find the money, and you need to have a workshop, and you need to go through the budget and find it. So where is it? And I'm being, I'm being facetious, but I'm being serious at the same time because this drumbeat continues, and this is the reality of where we are. And if you attend a TPO board meeting, I mean, we know for a fact, we were just talking about this yesterday at the elected leaders' roundtable. FDOT informed our TPO, I don't know, three, four months ago, that their next five-year work program within our district was going to be cut, was it 25 million?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty percent, wasn't it?
It was almost 20% for FDOT expenditures in our area. But we know costs are going up. What, concrete was 33%. Every cost is going up. We know that. And we've already been alerted by FDOT that the decrease is, it's decreasing, the funding's decreasing from FDOT. Costs are going up, and the need's not going away. And all of these projects that we looked at today, every single one is within a city, almost every single one. Our roads, we don't just do roads that are in the county. The county includes 16 cities. And I'm so frustrated at hearing some of the continued purposeful misrepresentation of where we need to go as a county. And honestly, yesterday at that lunch, Mr. Reckonwald, if any of you were there, I've had it. I have. There comes a point in time, if you're going to keep making allegations and these comments, bring it forth, show it. Sit down with us, have a meeting. What's your concern? Where is it? But these are very real needs, they've been identified. There's, I think the county's doing a great job in maintaining what we currently have and then using the funding that's available now in this projection. So I'm not hiding behind it anymore, Mr. Reckonwald, and I'm not going to, when I'm being asked, my question is, then show it. Don't tell me, don't tell me it exists out there because unless you can sit down and show it to me where it is and these costs going up. One mile, one mile of road is 5 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Each way, each way. So you take one mile, if you want to do one mile of road, let's keep the perspective, it's 5 million. 5 million for one mile each way. So now you want to do a huge project, and these take time. The other thing that I've heard is, well, you know, we, we're going to get this bridge done, I can do this in two years, three years, or we're going to get this done, and you know, you're just not having the right conversations. Well, show me. Show.
Show me tomorrow.
Show me. We're going to the meetings, we're sitting through these hours and hours and hours. It's not easy. There's no easy answer, and if we could fix them all, this council would.
Right. And it's a nationwide problem, by the way.
It is a nationwide problem.
It's not just, it's not unique to Volusia County. It's a nationwide problem. Infrastructure is certainly crumbling in a lot of areas, and actually, in our case, we have done a very good job maintaining. So we don't have the crumbling infrastructure that you may have. We're lucky we don't have some of the elements either, but we do have congestion-based issues and as we grow. So that is definitely, and the price tag is so big that the problem with going to other areas is you would wipe out conceivably other very important programs that you have in those other funds. You know, a lot of that's public safety. So you really, if you went to other areas in the budget, the price tag of this is so big that, you know, you would not be able to make much of a dent, yet you could really damage some of the other programs that we are doing. So that's been the conundrum. And it's also something that we have addressed, talked about, taught, given many presentations, and will continue to do so. It's just been one of those things, and unfortunately, people, when they feel the pain, and then when that pain is that congestion, and by then, the cost of land enters into it because it's now been developed a lot more, and now it's even more expensive to get yourself through that pain.
Just a couple of points. You outlined or named two projects that began to be done in 2011. I think there were two specific, probably more. I think going forward, if you have a way to denote when those, any project we have, projected project or need, if the year that it started, recognizing that need is recognized and referenced, because we're hearing from the public, A, what Ms. Dennis says, that you've got the money, B, that it just happened for neglect of not recognizing it happened where we are. where we are because of the lack of funding, and if there is no funding, how are you going to do it? I calculated going through there, you highlighted, footnoted or asterisk beside each project that was on the half-cent sales tax project. Close to a hundred million dollars of these projects we're looking, could have, would have been funded had the half-cent sales tax gone through.
Right.
And so, we would be ahead of the eight ball on projects that we realized and recognized that needed to be done almost ten years ago, so, on, on some of, on the major ones. So, it's helpful to have this, it's helpful to show that where our money for the projects comes from, that's it, it doesn't come out of the general fund, the tax, the property taxes, it can't come from there, this is where it comes from, and this is the way we can get it. And then you have others saying, well, we can cut five percent off of the general fund, but we're not going to touch public protection, or public safety, or the jail, or this, or that. So, there just isn't the funding there, and we've done a great job of keeping the taxes low. I think you've done a great job on the bonding issue, the sixty-five million dollar bond issue, we've got a hundred million dollars worth of projects done, which would not have been done had that nickel gas tax been passed.
Yep.
George?
Just want to recognize, one of the, yeah, one of the people, the founder of the six, of the, of the bond, who did a lot with that, has made a guest appearance here today, our retired county engineer, Jerry Pritten, who probably rode his bicycle over here in good health and, and here to visit us, so, but he was here, of course, when we put that together, and, and was largely responsible for a lot of the completion of that work.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean to, to call him out on that, but it was appropriately timed that, that, to do that, so, kind of a sneaky way to do it.
Don't like it, it's his fault.
Ben?
I kind of want to reiterate what you've said, and Ms. Dennis has said, you know, what's important to me may not be important to somebody else, and vice versa, and we can't go cutting just what we don't like, but in the same token, if the money's there, let somebody show it to me. I'm like y'all, you know, we've worked very hard on this, and then we get somebody out there that says, people say, oh, it's there, go find it, well, show it to us, and I'll sure support it, but show it to me, don't just take and have talk about it, show it to me, because I think we've looked real hard, I think y'all have done a good job of looking for it, and it's time to either put up or shut up.
Okay, I guess you're, you're looking for direction on specifically two projects, three projects?
Choice on the, the.
The choice on the.
Taylor Road or Taylor Branch Road, and then otherwise, an approval of the remainder of the work program.
I think Ms. Dennis brought up an important part about why would we want to spend money knowing that we're not going to be able to complete or get the funding in time to complete the project, or to begin the project, right? That's, is a, I mean, that's a fair assumption, unless you know that in two thousand and twenty, they're going to pass the half-cent sales tax, which I don't know that it's even there or not, but I mean, even that wouldn't guarantee the money, would it? I don't, if you can't get the money, George, you're good at the money, what would your thought be?
Well, I, I support what the staff has brought forth, I mean, I think the wise are used, it's not a, I hate to say it, in the road, two hundred thousand dollars is obviously significant, but in the road world, it, it, it gives you probably the more valuable bang for the buck right now, is to go ahead and get that feasibility study done. It doesn't preclude the other project, they actually are in the, they happen to be in the same area, but both projects will be needed before it's done, and that's, of course, what we're trying to establish with the council, is, is the priorities, so, you know, we're recommending go ahead and put the money towards that now, doesn't mean really, may not even make any difference in the schedule for the other project, so, so that's why we stand by recommending that. But I will say, is it, I think it's fair to mention that the city of Port Orange, and we like to work with our city partners, they see it a little bit differently right now, but we have time to also work with them. Right now, I feel the best paying is, is for the Taylor Branch, it gives you that alternative, and as he said, the ability to possibly get some grants.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yeah, so, so why is Port Orange disagreeing on that? Because I think they need to be, you know, a part of that conversation if it's.
They have been, well, I think that, number one, they, they do want the other project, the other, the other part, I think, is that they probably need some time to work with the neighborhood and such back in there, because as Tad said, it's a little bit, they'll be disturbing a church and some other things back in there that may not, they may not want the project. I will say, we had to do some repair to a bridge back in there that because of one of their pipes, utility pipe blew open and blew a big hole and, and cut that area off, and you could see the impact that that had, it's, it's already heavily used, and what he's, Tad suggested is, is we maximize something that's already, already heavily used, people have already discovered it that live there, they know it's an alternate route.
If you, if you're looking at the Port Orange-Taylor Branch widening, either, one of them is from Dunlaught and DeClyde Morris, the other one is Forest Preserve Road to Summer Trees, do you suggest we spend two twenty-one, two hundred and twenty-one thousand on each of those?
No, we only have two hundred and twenty-one thousand, so.
You want us to pick one?
Correct.
Well, that's what I thought.
So, so, I'm still not quite clear if we know the impact and that they've got to do things on the, the branch road for churches and all that, is that correct?
Correct.
Why are we choosing that one rather than the other one?
Well, for, for us, the Dunlaught Avenue is heavily used, it is the, in Port Orange, it is obviously got the most traffic on it, so from, from a system-wide standpoint, Taylor Branch provides some relief to that. People that live to the south of Dunlaught, or are going over to Spree's Creek High School from the west side of the interstate, they can take Taylor Branch and get those trips off of, off of Dunlaught, from an engineering standpoint. Now, Taylor Road to the west certainly has traffic issues as well, but you don't have nearly as many as you do on Dunlaught, and so, from our standpoint, it was looking at it from a system-wide basis, what's better for the overall area. Taylor to the west does nothing, obviously, to improve Dunlaught in, in terms of the traffic flow through there.
So, is that your motion, Ms. Dennis?
Are you calling him? So, so, but, but to go back to that, is the concern over the feasibility study, and we don't want to invest money in not have the construction dollars and be back at starting over again with the second phase, with the second one op, option, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it makes sense all the way around as far as where we spend the money, how we spend it, the time, the time element that we're in, and what's going to have the biggest impact to the area?
Right.
And we're spending the money?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, just making sure. It's, this is county money, it's not city money, this is county money.
Correct, it's proportionate fair share paid to the county.
Oh, okay.
Prop share money to.
In that area.
So, I'm going to make a motion then, that we, that we give direction to staff to, on option one, the Taylor Branch Road widening from two to four lanes on the feasibility study?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? Motion made by Dennis, second by Lowry, discussion. Any objection to the motion? Here are none, motion passes unanimous, and you have achieved direction.
Do you?
We'd like one for the road program overall.
Yeah, then we'd like one more to just accept the rest of the road program as presented so that they can continue.
Wheeler?
Yes. Motion to approve the road project, projects.
To, to accept the five-year program?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Five-year road program.
And the second was Mr. Johnson. I heard him, I saw his hand move. Any objection? Here are none, the motion to accept the five-year presentation, road program is approved unanimous without objection. Okeydoke. Now we can go to item thirteen, community updates, Kevin Captain. Before he starts, council, I think that we can get through, work through without breaking. That's my goal, keep it going.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, honorable council members and staff, Kevin Captain, interim community information director. We have two new events, as from the last meeting. First one is the Ocean Center will host the ninth annual Light Up Volusia from five to nine Saturday, November thirtieth, on the east or ocean side of the convention center. The public is invited to attend the kickoff holiday season, and it's a free, fun-filled event. Highlights include a live performance by country music artist Caleb Lee, the lighting of a fifty-foot holiday tree at seven fifteen PM, and I understand we have a council member who's going to flip that switch, right, Ms. Wheeler? Excellent. And the arrival of Mr. and Mrs. Claus, holiday refreshments, children's activities, holiday showcases, and a gingerbread house competition. The event will also serve as a collection for Volusia County's Toys for Tots, for more information.
You don't have to read everything you've got in front of us, just saying.
See, oceancenter.com. I also want to just touch base on what Tad mentioned earlier in his Capitol presentation on the Shell Harbor ribbon-cutting event on Thursday, December fifth, that will actually be the only boat dock in Volusia County on Lake George. And a reminder then, quickly, on the, that's just a little picture of the Shell Harbor, food refines is the library's benefit to help support the Feed the Need. This is just a reminder that patrons can actually bring in food in exchange for their, their late books or late materials. And then, again, a reminder, November seventeenth to the thirtieth is the Public Employees Feed the Need, so there's plenty of deposit boxes and barrels throughout many county buildings, and that's going to run through November thirtieth. And just lastly, to let you know, the Volusia Magazine feature coming up, the next one will be on November the eighteenth, and we're going to have a little bit of a holiday spirit, and one of the features will feature Chef Costa with holiday cooking. So, any questions?
Ms. Dennis.
Is it true that on the, the Light Up Volusia at the Ocean Center, I know Councilman Wheeler's going to flip the switch, but I've heard that Councilman Johnson is growing his beard to play Santa Claus. See, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, there.
I'll update my script, and I'll have that on there.
He, he does, he does exist, he does.
Excellent.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anything else?
Item, we'll go to item fourteen, this is, we need a nomination from any member to appoint someone to the personnel board, of which we have an applicant, Dr. Fran Duval. Ms. Wheeler?
Motion to approve Dr. Fran Duval to the personnel board.
Any other nominations? Any objection to that nomination? Here are none. Dr. Fran Duval is appointed to the personnel board. We'll move to item fifteen.
I nominate Alicia Gordon.
Lisa Gordon nominated by Dr. Lowry to appointed to the Children and Families Advisory Board, any objection to that? Here are none, the motion passes unanimous. We'll move to item sixteen. Need a nomination at large and District One for the.
I nominate Shane, or Shayna Moore.
Shayna Moore is nominated to the appointment of the Historic Preservation Board by Ms. Gertman. Any objections to that nomination? Here are none, that motion passes unanimous. Mr. Johnson?
I nominate Andre Luda.
Andre Luda is nominated to the appointment of Historic Preservation Board by Mr. Johnson, any objection to that nomination? Here are none, the motion passes unanimously. We'll move to item seventeen. We have two open with one. Ms. Gertman.
Oh, that's for me? Oh, okay. I nominate, oh, do we have it? Sylvia Sabatini.
Okay, Ms. Gertman has nominated Sylvia Sabatini to the cultural council? Any objection to that? Here are none, the motion passes unanimous, that's your recommendation for the two-year term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and then, Mr. Johnson, you'll need one at some point, if you have it.
Yeah, if you have one.
Okay, public participation, we have no cards for that. We'll move now into discussion of matters not on the agenda. Mr. Reckonwald?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just a couple of quick things, I will be getting out to the council on Amendment Ten, transition team update, just to kind of go over, we have, that team has been working diligently, it's been working with the potential constitutional officers, it's examined the effects of our contracts and insurances, a lot of decisions that will have to be made, they've gathering these together, they've talked to a lot of those individuals and researched some of the effects, so we'll be getting that out, I just put together a summary that I'll send to you, but I just wanted the council to feel confident that there's been a very good group of our highest department heads and division heads and legal that have worked together to keep that on track should that go in that direction, so there'll be no issue from our end. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, because, as today, was, you know, we added a new internal auditor, we also are promoting people, there'll be more of these coming, the very next meeting, you'll have some others, so, what I've been doing is taking advantage of, of some of these changes, and the talents of the people that we're getting are different in some cases than what we've had in the past, so I will be doing a little bit of restructuring, moving maybe one division onto a different department head and vice versa, and, and a few items, of course, will be right up under myself directly. They require an ordinance change, and so I'll be putting that out for advertisement, but everything's been, is consistent with everything we've talked, but I do think it just better positions us as we go forward, and we, you know, we still have, right now, we have a business services department, well, that does not have a department head because of the retirement around the ore, but I'll have that filled very shortly, and we'll be bringing in a new accounting director, and we are very fortunate, we've been able to recruit somebody for that as well. So, we have these changes going on, but it's also time to start putting some of the divisions, like I say, matched up with the departments that I think they either best fit in, or the talents of those department heads match that a little bit better, so that'll be going out. And the last thing I'd like to point out is that I'm going to take a few days off, I'm going to take off this Friday, and, and then I'll be off next week, but I'll be out of, out of the area for a few days, but I'll be back by Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and I'll be in the area, but still up, take the rest of the week off, and Suzanne here, I'm, I know it'll be all in capable hands, and so we're, I'm excited to get a little time with my family, so, thank you.
Ben?
Yes, sir, I'd just like to briefly return to the discussion earlier today, in, with regard to the specific event that you approved today, there, the, the statute provides that the value of a ticket to, to a charitable event where a portion of the proceeds go to the charity is the value expressed on the face.
Could you speak in the microphone?
Well, the value where, where the, where the ticket has a face value, as this one does for a hundred dollars, the, the value of the gift is the hundred dollars, so, for the one that you have today, if you would choose to go with the value, the gift would be a hundred dollars. So, and we'll, we'll take, we'll provide you that information depending upon the, the event itself, and as these, as these occur.
So, if, so, the, so the seven hundred dollars added to that, if there are eight that the county is paying for, we would have to pick up, or not?
No, no, I'm saying that, that the stat, the statute provides that where the ticket, where there, where there is a face value in the ticket, that it's, that, where you could go to the, go and buy a ticket yourself, as this one does, for a hundred dollars. ticket yourself, as this one does, for $100, that's the value of the gift to the council member or to the reporting, other reporting individual.
Okay, so in that case, we would not have to declare that as a gift?
Oh, it's $100. Did you have to buy it down, or you'd report the $100? It's $100 or more?
Oh, I got you. So we would have to buy it down to zero?
Well, you'd have to buy it, you just have to buy it below $100. You could just pay a portion of the cost.
A dollar?
Yeah.
99 cents.
Well, I mean, you may choose to do more, but a dollar would bring it down to...
Is that clear as mud to everybody else?
It is clear as mud, because I've always been told it was $100. Anything over $100 was a problem and reportable. So now if it's, now if it's $99...
And 99 cents.
You know, so, yeah.
I'll verify, I'll report to you later on, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, to follow up with my question, the $700 that the county is paying to sponsor, we would not have to declare any part of that?
If it's a reportable gift, you report, and there's a face value on the ticket, you report that.
Or buy it down.
Or buy it down.
Well, he's saying we can give the county a penny, and we're good to go.
Councilmember Gertman brings up a good question. I will verify, I will verify my...
I believe it, I believe it's over 100, but I won't bet my life on it. But I believe you're right, Ms. Gertman.
I don't want to trust your ethics, uh, circuit, uh, reporting on my memory, so I'm gonna verify that point.
Okay.
Point well taken.
Not really. It's just that what it does, it, to me, a gift from the county to us could possibly violate our condition of the charter. Dan's gonna... Pardon? I don't know. Anyway, thank you, Dan.
Nothing else, sir?
And Ben, you can start. I know you're on the top of the list, but I've lost my list, but that's okay. I've got it. Nothing. Dr. Lowry?
All right.
Here we go.
Here we go. I hope that everybody appreciate the good bidding that I did last week. I got the smallest hog for the lowest bid of the night. Absolutely, yeah. Buck James was with me, and we had a good time. But anyway, the, it went well. I forgot to get the picture. Well, I gotta go back and get the picture. I forgot to get that.
I even sent you a text to get a picture.
Yeah, I know, but that's all right.
I figured, see, you're putting lipstick on it.
Mr. Chair, if I could real quick, it does say, under the Florida law, for contributions over $100.
It does. I've looked at the statute since we...
Over 100.
And I just hope in bidding on this hog that the Ethics Committee doesn't come back and get us for pork barrel spending or something like that. Anyway, had a good time, and it was a great fair. I'm done. Thanks.
Ms. Post.
So we had the grand opening of Security First Insurance. I know a number of us attended. That was good to see. One of the things I noted there was Lockhart, in his presentation, mentioned that, number one, they currently have over 400 employees at that location now, and it is set for 700 and something employees at that location in the future. And then there's also possible opportunity for expansion on the land there. So a very good thing for this area, a very good thing for Ormond. But one of the things that he noted as well, that I thought was interesting, is Lockhart said that when he initially went to start the insurance company decades ago, that he approached 100 investors, and all of them said no. And he just kept plugging and plugging and plugging, and was able to get, was able to get the funding and get his business started. So I just, I thought that was an interesting point that he made, that, look at how successful they are now. And at the time, it was, he approached 100 people, and they all told him it was a bad idea. So, his words, not mine. So, I just thought that was very interesting. So, much success to them. Very excited about having them in the area. As well, I would like to congratulate our supervisor elections, Lisa Lewis. Her daughter, Blaine, was married recently, and it was a beautiful wedding, so just want to congratulate her on that. I know she is probably lounging somewhere and just relishing the non-stress day now. So I know that was a lot of stuff she was going through to plan for that. So, very exciting. Also wanted to discuss Veterans Day just passed. There was a number of Veterans Day celebrations across the county, but on that same point, we have now, it has now been approved that the Veteran Service Division will have bus passes available for veterans when they show up for appointments and have no transportation to get elsewhere, or to get to, to their appointments. They will be provided bus passes. So that actually was, was a pretty big win. I know they've been asking for that for a while. Let's see. Dan, do we have, I know that we had talked about going to the state for an amendment in regards to the take permit, but did we ever get an opinion from the wildlife group?
We submitted the application, and it's been submitted. We have not received the amendment.
But the opinion, are we, are we still asking for an opinion from the Fish and Wildlife?
They've, they've not given us an opinion. They've indicated that we're, they've not, they indicated we won't get a written opinion.
Can you send that to me? Do we have that in writing, that they've said that they won't give us an opinion?
Well, what we have is a previous, I don't think you're gonna find it to be as definitive as what I said, but they, what they've told us is that we're responsible for interpreting the permit and for our compliance.
So nothing additional from when we last talked?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Okay. The last thing I had was in regards to the evaluations. I just wanted to stress, I've asked for some input as to your, if you could provide what you feel are your successes, and then any areas of, that you might feel you might need improvement in. I think that those are valid asks for, for our discussion next month. So, still waiting on that. It's been a couple of weeks. So, either, you know, we can do that verbally or in writing, however you want to do it, but I certainly would love to have that conversation with you. So, let's please work on that. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Wheeler?
Thank you. And to go along with that, I did, and it was going to come up in our workshop, that I got several forms, evaluation forms from back. So, one thing I did want to put on everybody's alert, I know you all read in the newspaper today that the Major League Baseball has, they're, stated that they're eliminating 42 minor league teams, and our Tartugas is on the list, if you can believe that. I know we're all gonna be fighting for that. They've already got some congressmen that are working on this, but that is the most absurd thing I've heard. When we get, we're the second highest in attendance, and it's a historical event there at the Jackie Robinson Field. So they're not only removing something that's historical. I, I'm, I'm ready for fighting on that, and if, if it comes to that, I would love to get a resolution from the county as I will, as we will proceed through every single dagum city, or whatever it takes. But I want everybody to be, be prepared, and I would like the support of the council to fight for this, for Daytona Beach. This, this is historical, and it's a shame that it would come down to this.
Since, since you brought that up, I had that on my list...
Okay, good.
To see what it is that we could do, because what is being proposed, that we may be one of the teams, that 2020 will be the last year.
Exactly.
They haven't decided yet.
Or move.
Right, or move.
Or move.
So, could be one or the other, or not. So whatever we can do as a county to...
I've, I've already contacted the Daytona Chamber, which is kind of taking the lead on this, and she's trying to get a hold of the owners, and he's out of town right now. But she will be getting with him on what does he need from us, or what can we do?
I would suggest that we get that information to make that resolution on the next meeting.
Absolutely. Okay.
Find out more in detail, because I think by the, by the 12...
I will do that.
We'll have that.
Yeah, got it. Thank you very much for your support.
Absolutely. That's it. Ms. Denny's?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna be sending out some information broadcasting to all of our electeds in the cities, as well as the county. Last week, I was in Sebastian when you were at your Q4 update as chair of the Indian River Lagoon Council, and during that particular meeting, we did our lightning round, if you will. The executive director and staff chose nine projects that the council had funded and asked them to come in and give an update to the council members, which represents, you know, five counties, and the DEP, the EPA, and two water management districts. And what, what just absolutely amazed me, two of the presentations, and I have the PowerPoints and their information, were on septic-to-sewer conversions, successful septic-to-sewer conversions within cities, within the counties, that were funded through grants, through working collaboratively with their communities. And I, when I listened to the first one, of course, I had all the information prior to the meeting, and had, had read several times and viewed the PowerPoints and the presentations that would be coming before the IRL Council. And at first blush, when I looked at it, I'm thinking, well, they're celebrating success. They're celebrating funding breakthroughs. They're taking advantage of every opportunity, and especially now, there are funding opportunities that exist for these programs that have never have. And I just, I, I listened to it, and they celebrated success, and I'm thinking, why are we our own stumbling block in Volusia County to success? So instead of dividing and continuing one to point fingers, there is a path forward. So I'm gonna share those PowerPoints, and I'm gonna share that information very publicly. So I think the question, the real question is, is it our goal to succeed and to go forward, or is it gonna be a continual goal to try to divide and, and create controversy? So if the issue is gonna be controversy continually, keep it up. I'm gonna go on the path, that there's a path forward. I've seen it. There's a blueprint. We can work collaboratively with those that choose to do it. Within our jurisdictional boundaries, we heard some during public input time, yet again, against the county, well, the cities don't, we don't tell the cities what to do. We do have jurisdictional boundaries, even though we're the county. We don't tell our cities what to do. We just don't. So I'm gonna share that good news and the path forward, and hopefully it's a template. And should any of our cities choose to follow that, I can put some links on there too, for those that made it happen. But it's happening all over. It's happening all over. So that's really good news. And I also had the opportunity, our DEP, federal and state, from the EPA and the DEP, were at that particular meeting. So taking advantage of that, and I want to thank staff, Mike Ulrich and Ben Bartlett, for helping me with the talking points on Volusia County's Reasonable Assurance Plan, and the implementation and where we are. Again, the good news with a path forward on very difficult expensive projects, water projects. And I was able to present Volusia County and all the good work that we're doing on a day-to-day basis. So going forward, there's great news. There is a path forward, and I am going to continue. And if anybody listening wants to talk about how these other communities did it going forward, I will entertain any meeting, anywhere, at any time, to share the collective information that I have as chair of the Indian River Lagoon Council, and would be happy to bring our staff up to facilitate that too, because there is, there's a path forward, and it's very good, and it's happening all over, and Volusia's not gonna be left behind. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Gertman?
Thank you, Chair. Couple of things that I wanted to prep and get out to staff, and I think one is, I think for January, we should have an updated, update on the census activity and our rollout for January. So maybe on our Janu- January agenda, we can have a presentation of where we are, how we're rolling it out, and, you know, have a full update. I think that would, that would be good. I also had a meeting with our community staff on affordable housing, and we talked about ways of being more collaborative, identifying what units we have in the county, and where, where's the most of them, where there's a greater need. I think that should be part of our workshop conversation, but I think our staff need to be prepared with whatever data they can show. I'm even asking if maybe there's a way of having an interactive map of, you know, here are units, here's what we have in the county, because I think we've done better than what it appears we've done, or there's more units available in certain areas. Like I see a lot of development in Deland. Maybe there's more density in Daytona. There's probably a greater need there, but there's a reason why developers are, are coming here and not going there. I don't know, but, you know, we don't have that, that data. So I, I think that would be helpful to see. I think we had already mentioned about the workshop with Echo and Forever Florida, and I think that should certainly be conversations where our staff provide us with the data and the information, the pluses, the minuses, and, you know, some of the pushback, but also some of the positives. I get a lot of positive feedback on both of those programs. And lastly, I met, or I attended the strategy meeting and the planning session for City of Deland, and of course, our favorite subject of Sun Rail. And, and the concern is that it was dead, and I said, no, it's on life support. So, so what I am reaching out to the public is, again, I, I get a lot of the calls and a lot of the concerns about it. So I'm saying to the public, if you have those concerns, put it on the record. Come in front of the, the county council. Let us know your for and against. I know when we were going through this before, there were hundreds of people who were showing up saying, you know, we have support for it. So I'm asking where those voices are now. If it turns out that we're gonna end up paying for something, or, or we're gonna have to pay either way, why won't we be paying for something instead of paying for, you know, a negative? So if $80 million can come to our area to support the future of West Volusia, it's gonna be hard for me not to support that, but I want to know who else is with me. So, I thank you.
I think some of those same people, because I've talked to some, and they now realize that the, we, we worked a number of what it would, what we would be saving, we're not gonna be paying, and everything's changed. We have a new FDOT District 5 Secretary. We also have a new CEO who's not been appointed, but I'm assuming that is gonna be the District 5 Secretary, CEO of Sun Rail. And we have discussion with the work group on where to go from here. And the extent, to extend it to Deland is not off the table. The funding is not there, and the funding will, will not be there based upon FDOT having to fund the additional part that was to have been funded, based upon the $100 million cost that has to come from the, the state. That money would then come, as people are realizing, from our District 5 revenue sources. In other words, that would be going against money coming for all interchanges, or anything where we would get money from the state. It would be coming from that. We're already gonna be cut. So if we're gonna be cut by them having to put another, well, they've got the 34 million, we would have to put in 20. well, they've got the 34 million, we would have to put in 20. That's 54 million.
Somebody really needs to demonstrate all the numbers. Every time we meet, the numbers change.
I don't think they've changed.
The process and the representation changes. So, honestly, I just think for the...
Ms. Gertman, just a minute. I didn't, I was just going to answer your question.
Did I have a question?
I thought you had one. I was just trying to explain where we are in the discussion. Nothing's finalized yet. We're working toward that end. And we have a new district person, and he's not going to give us the answer. We, we are working on the expenses. I don't know that any numbers that I've said have changed. There's $34 million that's coming from the federal government that the state's going to use. We will have to mat, do our 19-point-something million or 20 million that we will have to do. The balance of that will have to come from the state fund, because the federal government is not going to fund it, because it didn't meet the qualifications to get the funding. We're getting the other type funding we'd be getting for that.
So, this is the time where I just listen and I don't respond?
Well...
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to be clear, because you're, you're looking at me like you're, you're giving me that feedback, so if there's something else that I have to respond to you, and that was all I said. Is there a way of getting a piece of paper with these numbers on it, so it's clear? I'm, I'm very visual. So, if I can see the numbers laid out, what the expectation is, what it is we're presenting to the, within the team, the work team, or whatever we're presenting to the other partners, then I'll have a better idea of where we truly stand.
Okay, I thought, I thought all of us got a copy of the letter that was proposed.
I, again, I didn't see documented...
Done.
You know, amounts in detail.
It's in the work, George.
The letter, the various iterations of the letter have gone out to everybody. Nothing's official yet, because, you know, as we said, when all's said and done, the letter will, you'll all have to vote on, on the letter. I think, and I, I don't want to speak for Ms. Gertman, but what I'm hearing is actually a desire we all have of trying to get it captured on the numbers on one or two easy-to-read type sheets, which we'll attempt to do that. We, you know, we know we have to do part of that, because of the fact that when the department gives you a number, numbers, they're big, complicated spreadsheets, and we're trying to work our way through down. And those sheets have assumptions, and we're even looking at those assumptions to find out, is that, is that realistic as best we can? So, our goal is to have something that would be easy to show the effect, because I believe the other elected bodies up and down under our partners will need the same.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Wheeler? Mr. Chair, I have one more thing, and I'm so sorry. I did want to give a real big shout-out for one of our staff members. Last week, I attended the Daytona Regional Chamber's Resilience Balancing the Environment with the Economy. Amazing group of people that came to see this and hear what was being said. We had Jennifer Rupert, who is the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and she was heading up the resilience plan. And we had Dr. Julia Nashwatt, who is now the Chief Residence, Resiliency Officer with the State of Florida. But we had our Ginger Adair, Director of Environment Management in Volusia County, who knocked it out of the park. I had every person that was around me was saying, oh my gosh, she is wonderful. The information she shared was absolutely brilliant. So, I just want to, somebody pass that on to her. I was so proud of her, I told her then, but I'm making it public. I was so dagum proud that I, I could say that she was with me. She was with Volusia County. Absolutely fabulous job. Thank you.
Okay. I too attended the Security First grand opening. And I did hear a number that, since I guess they started the project, that they've added over 200 jobs paying $77,000 a year or more. So, in view of that also, the past three years, Volusia County has added over 15,000 jobs in the area in the past three years. So, y'all all got those numbers as well. That may include 16, 17, and part of, I mean, 18 and part of 19, so it may be almost four years. But, that's, that's a pretty good number of job creation, over 15,000. Happy for that. On the East Central Florida Planning, Regional Planning Council, we were presented a book. I've asked for more copies, I don't know if it's up on their website yet, but in 2006 and '07, Clay Irvin participated in it among one, How Shall We Grow? There were over 20,000 people participating in that, developing guidelines of how we should grow, what should we do? What they produced now, from 2007 through 2017, how did we do? How did we grow? And it's very interesting. And also, we're going forward with surveys with the various people that, or part of Orlando is putting out for people to ask, how do you think we did? Volusia County was projected to grow at 19%. During that 10-year period, we grew at 8%. So, the growth, this phenomenal growth that everyone thought we experienced, that was projected, it didn't happen. So, I thought that was just one of the key factors. Another one that was, was produced out there is how much our income per capita increased, or median income. It increased over 10%, almost 12% during that time. Not enough, but it did increase, which I thought was also good. And the population growth was not what they had projected. The population growth would have been either. The water consumption is listed in there on the water consumption is one of the, the keys, because that was one that was of major concern to all of us, making sure that we're going to have affordable amounts of, enough amounts, and affordable amounts of, of the water. So, that was very interesting to see, that not only was something done, how shall we grow, but there's measurable results that is being produced. And maybe Clay can research a little bit more on that, and get a recap, if he will, from us on that, George, to get anything else that we may need on that. The state of the county is well under the way. All of you are going to be having your cameras and everything ready to be filmed, and, and what's been happening. I'm happy to report that the support from the private sector has been overwhelming. We have received more contributions than ever to support the luncheon. So, you can get a free lunch. So, huge, Brian did a great job, and, and...
Yeah, we won't have to pay for our state of the county.
No, our lunch is free. We're going to make, well, the lunch is free for everybody, so if it's free for everybody, you don't have to declare anything. That's, that's, I know you are. Well, that's what, I, I thought the same thing. So, we'll keep the lunches as cheap as possible, but we may have steak and lobster this time. But that is, that is good. On the evaluation, I know you'd already touched on it. Billy, I too have picked up a form that I'll be using for mine, so I'll have that. I picked one up from the City of Ormond Beach, the Tortugas, Tortugas I had on mine. And I've had a couple of meetings and discussions with some individuals who want to do a public-private partnership on affordable housings, or transitional housings, using tiny homes. And I'm working on that individually, not representing the county at this point, but it's something that the county may want to, to, to look up at some point in time, because we've been, I've got prices that you can buy, basic tiny homes that are 300 to 350 square feet, for $16,000. Now, some of the things have to be done, but we're trying to get it worked out to where the private sector can do some, maybe some of the cities will want to work and have some located. We're going to do a, hopefully a five tiny home pilot project. It would, could be for transitional, from someone maybe coming from, maybe they feel like they're more, can be more on their own from the Bridge, or from Hope Place, or someplace like that, where they can go and actually be responsible taking care of their own place, which will help them also transition. And, Ms. Denny's, you had a point?
Not a point, but just one, one final comment or request. And your East Central Florida Regional Planning Council study brought this back to my memories, and I've had several questions lately about this. The Bryce Supply Chain Report that we did, and was presented last, this year. The question that I'm getting asked is about implementation. So, Mr. Manager, if you could work with Team Volusia, because we've included Team Volusia now in aviation and aerospace, folded them into this, at their request, based on the Bryce Supply Chain Report, I want to know where we are in implementation. Have those companies been contacted? Where are they, have they been identified, where's expansion? I don't want to just have a cute cover and call it, we did the report, here we are, and you know what we do? File, we file it, and it sits, and it sits on, in, on our, in our libraries. We're not at that point anymore. I want the practi, I want to know the practical implementation, drill down on that report, who's doing what, who's following up, where we've identified those second and third-tier supply chain opportunities within all of Volusia? In other words, what are the existing businesses? Where can we expand? Where do we need to recruit? Because we need the higher-paying jobs, and this is the higher-paying jobs. This is our future. That, that, that plan is definitely the, the future. So, if you could help identify that and get that on an agenda item, county council, if that's okay, council, I think we need an update. And with Team Volusia, I want to know where they are in implementation with that. They wanted to embrace that industry, so I'm looking forward to where they are on that. If you, after, obviously, the first of the year, get it, come back to us with an update. I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, other than happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and we're adjourned at 1:32.